It's very selective in terms of location, in terms of how how they want to enforce the law. And again, like Calgary, sorry Calgary has twenty one lounges, like couple, couple dozens of them. And even Lethbridge has one, Red Deer has one. Vancouver has quite a bit um in terms of the Vancouver um like uh land. Sorry, like the mainland and the and the um the island. And then Ontario, two hundred locations in there, Saskatchewan even has a couple dozen, sorry, in Saskatchewan. And Quebec, same thing. Um and this is here, just touching very quickly about the proposed location where we're gonna put the uh the hookah lounge. We even chose a name for it because we're really excited, hopefully it does go through. Um so it is in the East Village. Um and on this, on this uh very, very much the uh the like that yellow spot is where the location is going to be. And if all goes to plan, it's about ninety five yards uh. Like the closest, the closest location is ninety five yards to indoor residences. So not, not, no effect whatsoever on any um like homes or whatever the case is. Okay, um this is just touches also on the space. It's a, it has a an outside patio area four thousand square feet with them as in probably up to seven thousand total. And this is here, it just showed you that we already um. Want to have the best experience for what we're gonna go through the lounge, which, which has. Which has about fifteen to twenty thousand uh CFM, which is a cubic, you know, cubic meter per minute. And that is, that is kinda like sucks all the air. So even if somebody wants to go on there and wants to, you know, not just enjoy the food and the experience, they don't, not gonna be a secondhand smoker. The cuisine is mostly Gabi Mediterranean with a hint of South European. Um and you know, like has fifteen to twenty um flavors in terms of the hookers and coffees, teas, juices. Um the age would be restricted to eighteen years old. Plus, anybody is gonna be less than eighteen years old, they have to be accompanied by with with an adult, hopefully family. And um to be served a hookah. Uh and we will have the right to decline uh whoever doesn't kind of fit within the place or the community, so don't have that. Um and it's, again, Saint Albert is, has a very, you know, wide variety of backgrounds. And the uh last seventeen years I lived in here, so this is here, they they want to experience something like a hookah lounge can present. Um I know it's not for everybody, but this is why we love to choose to live in here. There's a freedom of choice and also, you know, like we, our voice do count. So hopefully together we can do something about this.
Awesome. Um thank you for that, your presentation, it's something I don't think this council's talked about or considered at all, well, that's gorgeous. I actually have a new neighbor who invited us over to Smokey Hookah, I don't think, so I know what's happening in Saint Albert for sure. I'm gonna open it up for questions, but had a little bit of a brief conversation with some of our staff in preparation of your presentation. And I'm gonna go to our legal counsel in a minute, but I was, I was told that. That the province allows them um as long as there's no tobacco in in the hookah pipe. But you're talking about flavored tobacco, so I'm getting, so there would be tobacco in.
It it is a flavor tobacco, like, you know, like even if you're gonna go to any, any uh hookah lounge across the nation. It will have, it's a flavored tobacco. But the ventilation in most of them that were shut down in by AHS in Edmonton, they had a very poor ventilation. So there is a very kind of a big white cloud of our, the other people who were not there to smoke, so they're. You know, like in turn they will be, you know, like a a secondhand smoker. And again, like, you know, people weren't gonna smoke it in their own houses, you know, like it's, they exposed their children to it.
Right.
Especially in the winter months, when they're gonna go to a setup like what we're gonna be preparing, where it's gonna be a very high section in there, it will be a healthier. Kinda outcome uh on their, on their families and also for themselves, they're not gonna be like smoking it twice.
And another quick question that occurred to me is would it be a licensed establishment?
Of course.
So it'll have alcohol?
No, sorry, no, no alcohol, because this is, this is one of the things is that we didn't want to present alcohol, most of our communities, they don't indulge.
Right, okay.
So it's gonna be something that people can go and go after hours, after like one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, where there's no alcohol whatsoever. Because some people wouldn't even attend places where there's alcohol.
Okay, uh uh councillor Mackay has a question, so Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious in relation to some, along some of the lines that you had asked. Um, Madam Mayor, I guess that, so the province recently came out with new restrictions on the sale of flavored tobacco. So do you need, you have to be licensed by AHS or by the AGLCC? In order to buy your product and then consume your product in your license, in your establishment, is that how you, so it's. If it's permitted in the community like Sherwood Park, do you need a additional licensing from? Uh the provincial government or Alberta Health Services?
Uh not, not so much, it's, it's exactly like when you say they're selling vape. Or like, you know, there is, there's also like shisha uh products and also flavored tobacco is being, is being. On sale like in in some of the shops, but not um like for us would be pretty much like we're gonna be dealt the same way. So yes, there is additional licensing, but it is there, we can obtain that. But the indoor smoking facility is, is not like when we're talking about the business um licensing um department in, within the city, they don't allow that. In here, because of the bylaw.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll probably have questions of administration afterwards, that's all.
Councillor Brumetsky.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation today, I have probably about ten questions here, so.
Yeah, definitely, absolutely.
Sorry, Will, though.
Yes.
Uh related to the hours of operation, uh it was mentioned, did you mention a time for that?
So the, the, what we're thinking is probably gonna be like from eleven AM all the way to like one o'clock or two o'clock in the morning.
One o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, one or two o'clock in the morning, we're gonna be on the outside of Plaza, so it's not gonna be kind of affecting any. People's kinda like sleeping their own home, because as I showed you on one of the slides, it's about ninety, ninety five yards from the closest house.
Okay, and to clarify, if you're doing the hookah in a specific area of the restaurants slash slash lounges, how you're presenting. Is there a separate area for that, or is everybody exposed in the whole?
Uh well, again, i- i- it is, we're, we are in the, in the um proposal. Uh like the plan is getting proposed, so we're gonna see what we can work with. Mostly it is, it is kinda like shared space and it is people prerogative. Like their choice to come in and be the, in such an environment to be in there in a hookah lounge.
Okay, how long would someone smoke one of those pipes, like how long would you?
An hour, an hour to, two hours, depends, I mean, we're gonna be also putting. Uh we're thinking of also putting big screens for like to, to stream uh sporting events. So for like hockey game or like uh soccer, so sometimes it it goes longer, depends on the sporting event.
Uh would you know how many cigarettes an hour of the pipe is equal to possibly?
Well, the, the World Health says hundred, but that is, that is something that it is. Um the researchers have, like there is some research saying it's not that many, but again, who am I to say?
Okay, and if you bring a family member in who's under eighteen, um how do you get around laws for that? I mean, you know, you can't have someone younger than a specific age by parent consent doing many things in society. So how, how is that organized?
They have to be accompanied by somebody who is all, like an adult, so under eighteen, they wouldn't be served. Because you're gonna be asking for an ID.
And what do you mean by under eighteen, like what, why would you want someone younger uh using tobacco?
Well, again, uh.
Like what age?
There is lots, lots of, you know, teenagers, they do indulge alcohol. So smoking, smoking is one, you know, one part of it, like they do small pot. So really like, you know, for me to, to have them in our facility, because our community wouldn't, wouldn't allow kids to smoke. Unless they are with their parents and their parents consent to it. So if they're with their parents, it's fine, but if over eighteen years old, they're an adult by law.
Okay, and what age would a parent allow a child to partake?
Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
And um so the, in your proposal, you're not attached to any other buildings then, right? That the, they would get the smell next door kind of thing, or you independent spot is what you're finding?
It is gonna be a shared spot, so ne- next one, like because that specific uh building was supposed to be for Cacti Slub. And Cacti Slub uh backed out, so we're taking, almost half the space there.
Then are you affiliated with the restaurant for the food or?
Yeah, we're gonna be serving food.
Which restaurant?
Oh, we're not gonna be, it's gonna be our own.
Oh, okay. Okay, I think that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, councillor Brumetsky, councillor Killig, there's a lot of questions here, so councillor Killig, you're next.
Yeah. Thank you and thanks for coming in to chat with us today. I, I think the real um struggle that I'm having is to understand. What I believe we have a provincial law that says no tobacco on inside uh smoking. Um establishments or anything like that, and yet we have a huge list of communities that. Um do have established hookah lounges as you're proposing here. So does that mean that they're actually operating illegally? Or in these other communities, do you know if they changed their bylaws to override the provincial government? Law that says no smoking of tobacco inside, cause I, I, I'm really just.
For sure, Mike, I, I think, I think um some of them, they do break the law uh in terms of. You know, kinda like saying it's a hookah lounge, but it's a herbal hookah, but they slip in the tobacco in there. Um but some communities like uh especially the bigger uh metropolitan cities like Toronto, Vancouver. Montreal, Quebec City, they do have changed the bylaw, so they have changed it to accommodate their. You know, hundreds of thousands of people who wants this to be open and operating. And this is what we, what we're trying to achieve, we're not trying, trying to break, break the law, this is why I'm here. You know, like it's, it's about working around the law and with it and be abiding by it and opening space that's gonna be. For people to come and enjoy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you today for coming and presenting before council, it's uh. It's not often that people come and do this, so I appreciate you doing that.
My pleasure, it's very good to be to in person.
So my only question for you is this, is that um so. Hookah lounges, you're smoking tobacco, but it's. They have to purchase the tobacco from you in order to consume on your property, is that correct? So they're not smoking other stuff that they brought in themselves, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, appreciate that, and I suspect I'll have some questions for administration around the process. That we would go to to even consider such, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Councillor Hughes.
Thank you, so I just want a couple of clarifications, I just, the sound was reverberating, I didn't quite hear what some of the questions that councillor Brumetsky said with the answers. So, under eighteen can attend, so could you tech, would then, would you, let's say I'm a parent and I have a six year old. Could I then bring the six year old in with me and just have them watch me smoke?
Well, that is something that we're probably not preferring people to come in with their kids, because mostly it's gonna be for adults. Um so we want, we want to allow kids to be, to be there. Um i- i- it is, it is something that we're trying to get parents away from their kids, so they don't smoke at home. They smoke at our venue, so we would, we would say no to that.
Okay, so what is the age limitation of what you're allowing come in then?
Sixteen, sixteen and over.
Sixteen and over?
Yeah.
So if I was a sixteen year old and I came with somebody over eighteen, would that be, would I be then be allowed to smoke?
If it's a parent.
Okay, but if the parent comes and says, yeah, you can smoke with me, it's all good, okay.
Definitely.
Um. The other one was, so I missed, who is, who will be stationed next door to the place that you're proposing?
We don't know yet.
Okay, so what, I was like, I didn't hear what that said, but okay, don't know yet makes more sense then. Um and then have you asked any other communities surrounding Edmonton for this, or is Saint Albert your first um one you've gone to?
I, I am a resident and a business owner in here, and I want to keep this to Saint Albert, because we had the opportunity to open a show park. But we, we opted to seek the opportunity here. And I have, I have a working relationship with Landrex as a developer, because we do lots, I, I own a window covering company. So we do most of their buildings, like the high rises and commercial for window coverings. So they told us about the space, and I told them, you know, I have to present this to the council, because the bylaw obviously is against it.
So you mentioned Sherwood Park, Calgary and Lethbridge, are there other communities in Alberta that are also allowing this with their bylaws?
Uh Red Deer, I know there is one, but it's not like, if you're gonna go on Google, it won't show, because I know people would go to, to uh Silver Lake. And there was top forest smoke like in the shisha lounge over there, but I, when I searched it online, I couldn't find it.
So three plus one unofficial, is that what I'm hearing is in Alberta? So there's the three communities and then also Red Deer.
Correct.
And, and there are no other communities that you're aware of?
Not, I am, yeah, like I know, I know Grand Perry has a couple, a couple of places, they do it under, but again. It's not with a business license, I'm talking the ones that are actual licensed to operate.
Okay, so um I think you had mentioned, or at least I understood that Edmonton had it before. They had, and then they removed the permitting, what, twenty seventeen, I believe you said?
Sixteen, seventeen.
So do you know why that was removed? That's actually a pretty drastic move to remove the, an option.
So as I said, like uh they had mostly, most of them, they had very poor ventilation. So you would walk in into uh a white cloud, so you start smoking by just stepping in there. And this is one of the things that people, uh like the businesses around these establishments complained a lot. Because, because of that, and also there is a noise, there's noise issues, like these, these people would have very loud music. And it wasn't very well uh presented to the community.
So would your intention to also have uh music of that type of loudness, like is that common or?
Within, within, within our um like building, it's a, it's gonna be a new building, so it's gonna, not gonna have. Uh much sound going out, especially when the trail is there, it's gonna be a very loud, you know, place already. So whatever music is gonna be, you know, getting out, which is gonna be on the patio, we're gonna have speakers on the patio itself, it's not gonna be going beyond that.
Okay, but there is like music and it's not a quiet little place where you just sit quietly and smoke, there's like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, you, you walk by a few plazas and you can hear music coming from shops, but nothing that is gonna be provoking.
Okay, um, okay, I had one more question, it just came to me and it left me again. So I think that's all I have for now, because I didn't write it down and I should have, so um thank you for coming.
Uh definitely, any, anything, you have my email, so any questions you have, you can feel free to, to email me, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Oh, just, I remember, so you said that one hour of smoking is equivalent, or they're saying equivalent to a hundred cigarette smoke per person?
It's one shisha, it's one shisha head.
One shisha head?
Yeah.
So how long would it take to go through one, I'm not, I'm not a hookah smoker, so how long would it take to go through one shisha head?
Depends, depends on how good it's made, sometimes it is very poorly made, but if it's made the right way, it can go up to two hours.
So if that was, so one shisha head would be fifty cigarettes an hour, if it was made well?
Correct.
Okay, and, and a pack of cigarettes is how much? I'm not even familiar with that, is it like fourteen or is it twenty? So it'd be like, let's assume it's twenty just for argument's sake, so it'd be the same as two and a half packs of cigarettes?
Again, this is, this is, this is uh not, not a very accurate study. It's been mentioned, but there's no proofs behind it, so if there is any study that does have support that claim. I'd be more than happy to take a look at it, because in our community, we smoke shisha to quit smoking.
Ah, okay, well, people smoke these cigarettes to quit smoking too, and there's all kinds of issues with those as well, so. Um one solution may not be actually a solution, it's just into the frying pan to the fire, so. I, but even if what the study said was fifty and you're saying it could be plus or minus, right, because we really don't know. But it's, that's what one study has said, is what you're telling us.
Um I, again, I'm not sure about that study, but yes, this is out there.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you for sharing that. Okay, thank you, councillor Mackay.
You're welcome.
So after you identified Sherwood Park is having it, I, so I went online here and would it be similar to what they have at Mazati?
No, it's gonna be a, a much, a much better.
But it is, so it'd be more like, I mean, so Mazati runs like uh in their new location, they run like a Mediterranean grill and lounge area, right? So you're actually looking at more like a restaurant.
Correct.
And you're gonna have a restaurant that's gonna follow kind of that general template, is that?
Pretty much, yes, like we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna uh have a full menu of, of food, desserts, juices and, you know, uh teas and coffees.
Yeah, just looking at the pictures, it doesn't look like it's that bad of a place, actually.
No, it's not bad at, at all, I'm not, I'm not saying it's bad, but again, who, whoever wants to, to experience this, they have to drive all the way there. And I'm not saying it's like an hour, but in the wintertime, it could be.
Yeah, no, I wasn't my intent, I just rounded, it's, it's not like you're gonna walk into a, into a, a seedy restaurant. And there's gonna be smoke hanging from the, it's not like you're gonna be.
No, no, no.
You're gonna be involved in that, you're gonna walk in and you're gonna look like it's a regular restaurant, except for you're gonna have the ability to.
Absolutely, I know I, I only have five minutes, but again, I can share with you kinda like um restaurants in Dubai. And Lebanon, like, you know, like Beirut, and where you walk in, it's a very open, open concept and well ventilated. The space, when you walk in there, you can actually just smell the aroma, which is very delicious. So it's kinda like, you know, it, it gets you going, because the ambiance is very, is very kinda like calm in. And you go there and you just like relax at the end of your walking day, and this is, for us, like we go work exactly what work hours in here. We go home, have a, a quick bite to eat, shower, sleep like, you know, like have an app for like an hour, two hours. And then head out at eight o'clock up until like one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, go back home, sleep and back at it again. This is the lifestyle for most of the countries that people live in here.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, just because obviously I've never been in one of the restaurants, I, I wanted to see if there was an actual, something I could compare to. Looking online, there's obviously, it looks just like a normal restaurant.
Yep. I mean, I encourage you to go and visit, I mean, I know that you don't smoke, just go visit, try their food. I, I, I know like it, it's, it's a very different experience for lots of people who are not aware of it.
Yeah, but if I'm sitting in the booth over, I'm not gonna be getting secondhand smoke from them.
No, the ventilation there is good, should be better, but it's good. It's better than the, some of the places we went in before, like in Edmonton, you go out in there and it's like. It, it's kinda like a joint. Yeah.
We're in Sherwood Park tomorrow, we should stop in.
Yeah, definitely, I know that they're open after one o'clock in the afternoon.
All right, I have no more questions um from members of council, so the way this works, um. Obviously, we're not gonna be making a motion to do this today, right, we need to do our research.
Sure.
Need to understand, maybe visit, um but we, but the next step in our agenda is to allow us now to ask questions of um our administration. We've got our legal counsel here and we've got Ekdev online, yeah, and city manager will guide us through that. So uh stick around for another few minutes while we kind of explore this and what it would mean to do this in Saint Albert.
Okay, perfect, should I sit there or stand here?
No, you can go, sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council, questions of administration rising from that presentation? I'll start. About the tobacco, Marta, help me out with this, sorry. Um we talked earlier, you said the province allows. I don't know, smoking or, or something with that, as long as there's no tobacco, so is, is there a disconnect from what you heard from the presentation?
Uh so my understanding is that the province generally in their legislation prohibits smoking and vaping indoors in public places. Um there are clearly places where shisha is being smoked, those. I'm actually curious about the mechanism whereby that exception is made, but there must be some sort of a mechanism to make an exception.
Okay.
For that provincially, I don't know what it is right now, I, we could do some research and work into that. To look into how, how the mechanism, what the mechanism is, but that is my understanding currently, that that is a provincial.
Okay, but if it's licensed in Sherwood Park, I'm assuming there's a way.
Yes, I'm, I'm operating under the same assumption, there must, it must be either there's an exception made or they're tobacco free. Or some sort of other mechanism that I can't think of at the moment.
Okay, all right, that was my first question, um. Our, but no matter what, our municipal smoking bylaw currently says no smoking indoors. Of, of everything, vaping, cigarettes, weed, joints, hookahs included, right?
That's correct.
So we would need an amendment to our smoking bylaw?
Yes, minimally.
First step, for sure, right?
Correct, and also um there are some land use considerations here, there would need to be potentially an amendment. Under the land use bylaw in order to permit the use, there would need to be an application from an applicant to make, to make an uh amendment to the land use bylaw.
Right, so the, uh Mike's or Adrian's here, you could. Nowhere in our land use bylaw does it allow hookah lounges permitted or discretionary, I, I assume, right?
That, that's my understanding, yes.
So if council really wanted to pursue this, we would probably need your support and help identifying what land uses. So if it wants to go in East Village, it would be mixed DC and MU, right? But isn't that DC and MU, what is it up there, East Village? It's a mixed use type.
Yeah, I think it, it's a, I think it's a direct control mixed use.
Direct control, DC, DCMU, here we go, yeah, so that would be another step to make this happen. So.
A hundred percent, I think the, the first step would be a lot of homework.
Yeah.
Right, to confirm the provincial regulations, um you know, as Marta said, what's the mechanism by which? Uh my, my understanding is, is water pipes or, or hookahs are, are. Kind of fall through a bit of a gray zone as it relates to the provincial um.
So could call out to Sherwood Park would be a good start, right?
Yeah, and so, you know, an IR or something to, to, to sort of launch that, that would also then, um you know, allow us to dive into our regulations. To confirm which bits and pieces would have to be amended or altered to permit such use.
Yeah, cool. Councillor Broadhead, do you have a question?
It's interesting, uh just reading here, Quebec and Alberta are the only two provinces or territories which permit cigar lounges. Is there any difference? It's all tobacco, right?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
That's a, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, so there's currently no permitted or discretionary and so land use and bylaws.
Smoking by law.
Smoking.
And smoking, okay, so the process for doing that, would applicant first or? Or would there be a council-led initiative if that would be?
I, I, I mean, so, so I, I refer to what Mr Fletcher had suggested, so I think the first step would be to do our homework, so an IR. Um and then assuming we can figure out the proper mechanism for that, then I think it would be kind of a applicant-led application to amend the land use bylaw. And then if that happened and if it got approved, then administration would recommend at the same time, changes to the smoking bylaw in order to affect. That change to the landers by law.
Yeah, I'm sure the constraints around it uh no matter what, but, okay, thank you.
Councillor Mackay.
Do you, you've re- referenced an IR a couple of times, legislation, do you need a formal one or will this be in, okay.
Thank you, need a formal one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, fair enough.
Okay. So if anyone's thinking about an IR, it suggests the steps to um make this happen, so. An applicant led, and we have Mr Hassan's email. Um amendment to the land use bylaw, there's the associated fees that go with that, and then if that's approved. You would also bring forward amendments to the smoking bylaw at the same time.
Yes.
Okay. So just let us finish the questions here, that's just making sure everyone, councillor Jolly, you're, you're good, you've got your hands up?
Yeah, I just have a question for uh Mr Fletcher, so if this IR goes in to kind of do the research, would this, this be something that you'd bring back to council? Just because of the volume of work for a vote?
Uh we, we would do the research and yes, I would, we would um inform council of our findings. At the end of the day, if we couldn't find a way to navigate this, then there's no point wasting.
I think, I think councillor Jolly's asking is if, before you do any of the, is that my right, yeah?
Yeah.
Would you like council to somehow give you some support that even if you did all this um research, it's gonna pass?
Um, well, yeah, thank you councillor, I, I would assume if the IR was put in, it would be because someone was thinking of. You know, the potential for this to go forward, if it's just an exercise in homework, then I would respectfully recommend we don't do it.
Right, yeah, but I think according to our policies, if one member of council has an IR, that's gonna be a significant amount of work. The city manager can say, I'm not doing this work, until I know I have council support.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not convinced this is a hugely significant amount of work, to be perfectly honest.
Okay. Pardon? Okay. All right, any more questions? Okay, uh one last thing for you, Mr Hassan, is can you just email us your presentation? Your slides, is it, were they exactly the same as what you? Your slides. Is it, were they, were they exactly the same as what you sent us in the letter? No, I wouldn't mind just reading the entire summary of your, of your, because you went through it pretty fast. Yeah, and then, um, and then one of us will get in touch with you and see i- if, if, and, as I said, an IR means an information request. So ask, a, a request from council asking our administration to do further research on this and, and then, um, through that, if we wanna really push this, you, you would need to make an application to the city to amend our land use bylaw to allow hookah lounges in, um, the area that you wanna put it, which is East Village, which is, uh, the land use is called DCMU, direct control mixed use, direct control means council makes all the decisions. And then, um, if that is approved, they would bring an amendment to the smoking bylaw. So that's kind of the next steps, but it's not gonna be in the next couple of weeks. It's gonna be a little bit of time. Okay. Absolutely, yeah.
So just, just because, uh, uh, Counselor Broadhead, he, he mentioned there's no cigar bars. There is actually in Edmonton.
Yeah, he said Alberta and Ontario are the only provinces that actually allow them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we also.
Oh, sorry, Quebec. Okay.
And also, we, we did like a quick petition about this, like, and then everybody around it, and we got about eight out of ten people not against having a lounge, hookah lounge in the area.
Okay.
I can scan this and send it to you if you want.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, can I just ask you, where did you, who did you ask on the eight out of ten? Who, who was your polling sample?
Uh, it's, it's the, the neighbors around, like, just behind, like the East Village. So, and where I live, like, I live on, on, like, Elise Place, which is just across from Lewis Hall School, which is literally like about, you know, like, five minutes' walk to the location. So we went around the community and we did a quick petition.
Okay, so it's just the immediate area. Okay, thank you. I had one more question for Marta, if you can also.
Okay.
Um, Marta, I'm just curious, if I were to go to a place and buy cigarettes for my sixteen-year-old, like, if I was to go there and, and bring my sixteen-year-old and say, he's okay if he buys cigarettes, is that allowed? My understanding is you gotta be eighteen, period, if you wanna purchase cigarettes.
Yes, I think your understanding is also my understanding.
Okay, so I just can't vouch for him and be like, it's cool?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that is the only presentation, so and that's only business arising. So let's get on to the consent agenda, which there are two things. Unless anyone wants to add to the consent. You ready, Coach? Oh, Counsel Keeluk, sorry, you're already up there. Go ahead.
Uh, the, the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved. Six dot one, regular council meeting minutes of July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, eight dot one, corporate quarterly report, Q two, twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. Sorry, I was just reading the agenda. So this is our new format, Marta, which says for information only. But we still have to put it on a consent agenda.
Yes, or it could, yes, it could be on a consent agenda or not, but this, this one was, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the public hearing, but it's scheduled for two, so we have twenty minutes. So we could probably get the temporary election position, uh, agenda item dealt with. So is there, Marta, do you have a presentation on this one?
I just have a verbal presentation.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for those that don't know, my name's Marta Coffield. I'm the director of the, uh, Legal Legislative and Record Services Department. And, um, I'm here on behalf of our team to make a request to council to fund a temporary position, um, to help us, um, with the planning, um, and execution of the next, um, upcoming twenty twenty-five municipal general election. Uh, so, uh, just by way of background, um, our team performs a lot of, um, important functions. So we manage and coordinate and support all of these council meetings and committee meetings, um, committee of council meetings, subdivision and development appeal boards, and also the assessment review board meetings. Uh, we maintain the corporate registrar of all of the bylaws and the meeting minutes, and also our council policies and administrative directives. Uh, we handle all the FOIP requests for the city and we, um, conduct the municipal census, which happens approximately every five years. And finally, we also, um, plan and execute and run and manage all of the municipal general elections and by, by elections, um, as necessary. So, um, as council is aware, the province has, um, recently passed Bill Twenty, which is expected to take effect in the new year. And so Bill Twenty amends the Local Authorities' Election Act and the Municipal Government Act, um, with respect to the conduct of municipal elections. So some examples, I won't go through all of the changes, but I'll just go over the main ones that will impact our workload. Um, so we are going to be required to prepare a permanent electors register prior to the election, which is not something we've had to do in the past. We will also have to manually tabulate all of the votes, um, instead of using automated voting equipment like we did in the past. Um, also, if there is a margin of votes with zero, within zero point five percent of total votes, uh, there are gonna be mandatory recounts, so we have to take that into account in our process. Uh, also can a candidate of, um, eligibility criteria is now being changed to align with the Municipal Government Act criteria for councillors, which is a good thing, but that means that our process in terms of vetting candidates is going to have to be more robust. So that's another process change we're going to have to make. And additionally, the use of special ballots is being expanded. So normally, we don't really, we have minimal usage of, um, special ballots during our municipal elections, but we expect, um, increased usage in the next one. Um, additionally, so in addition to Bill Twenty, there's also an interesting logistical situation arising with the planning of the next municipal election in Alberta, which is the fact that currently the next federal election is also scheduled for the same day as our municipal election in Alberta. And there is potentially, we've, our team has been in contact with some folks who are planning the federal election. So there is a possibility that the federal election may be moved, um, to October twenty-seventh. But even if that happens, the logistical problems are still going to exist because advanced polling for the federal election will be taking place at the same time as our election. So that means we are competing with the federal government for election workers and spaces. Um, so planning is well underway because there are a lot of complexities, um, I think going forward for the twenty twenty-five election. But given all of these circumstances, we think it's prudent to kind of get all hands on deck. And we, we realize the pressure, the increased pressure on our legislative services team. So we're bringing the request forward so that we can fund a position for one year to, to take us from the fall through to the end of the municipal election. And normally, this kind of request would come during the budget process. However, that would mean the position couldn't start till April first, twenty twenty-five. And we really would like to have somebody start right away, November first. So that is why I'm here today. So respectfully, I'm, I'm recommending that a hundred thousand dollars be, um, taken from the election reserve fund to fund this temporary position. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and that's the end of my presentation.
There's a lineup of questions, starting with Counsel Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, next year would be very interesting, to say the least. Uh, my question, uh, maybe walk through this process of, uh, the electors list or like, how, how is that gonna be accomplished?
Thank you. So we're still in the preliminary stages of figuring out the exact details. Um, we have been in contact with representatives for municipal affairs and we understand that the provincial government is going to supply us with their list under, uh, some sort of data sharing agreement. So we'll have to make sure all of what considerations are taken into account. But that's just the beginning of the process. Then we have to verify that list because it's outdated. So I suspect it might be something similar to a census, as in door-to-door going and confirming people's information. I think that's where we're heading. Um, and so we may do that with our internal forces or we may do an RFP for that. I'm not sure yet, but we are going to be during the budget process requesting extra funds to, to our election budget in order to pay for that, that step that we're required to undertake.
I was, I was thinking there's gonna be many subsequent budgetary impact requests coming because of these Bill Twenty changes, right?
Yes, yes, during the budget.
Just the start.
This is the first, yes. So we've not normally asked for a position like this. Um, and this, a- and there will be during the budget process, there will be some, um, extra costs outlined for, for some of the things specifically related to Bill Twenty that we'll have to do. But we don't need to ask for that today, so that will come in November. Sorry to interrupt you, boy.
No, no, that, you sort of preempted my next question. I mean, they, the balance in the election reserve is eight hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred, whatever. My question is, is that gonna be enough? And, uh, so subsequently, this may be a rhetorical question, but given the impact of the provincial legislation, are they gonna pony up some money for the extra costs associated to, or, and, you know, municipalities are incurring?
So, uh, so to answer the question, I think there's enough in the reserve to fund everything we need for the twenty twenty-five election. That said, that fund is also needing to cover any by-elections. And as you know, by-elections are unplanned. By their very nature, they happen when they're not expected, but we have to make sure we have the money set aside in case they do happen. I don't believe the provincial government is, is offering any funds to municipalities to assist. Um, and I, and I actually believe that they've even said, because the part of Bill Twenty is that the provincial government will have the ability to remove a councillor from, for, for public interest purposes. Um, but if that happens, you would, we would need to run a by-election and be expected to pay for it.
Hmm, interesting.
And perhaps I could just jump in. I, I defer to Marta on the, um, the, the status of the election reserve. We, we believe it is sufficient, you know, perhaps there's a new model going forward, um, as, but we don't really know what the costs are, right? This is the first iteration and records going back, you know, to when we used to hand count ballots, it was a different paradigm and they're, they're useful, but not, um, you know, they, they don't put things into cement for us. Initial discussions with, at, at the public service level, admittedly, of, uh, the provincial government indicate, uh, no funds coming in support of Bill Twenty.
Hey, fair enough. I guess we're on for the ride, no matter what. Thank you.
Counsel Hughes.
Thank you. Do you have, you know, for the permanent electors, just to finish off what Counsel, you started it, so I'm gonna finish it for you, Wes. Um, do they have like an as-of date? Because people are always moving, right? Like, and so have they said like they want to be effective as of February first or later, or?
There is no details like that at the moment.
Okay.
We expect maybe, uh, further details at the beginning of next year. Um, but no, we don't have those details right now. We, I, I'm, I'm curious as well, but the whole concept of the permanent electors register is that it is only as good as the date that it's completed. And that, you know, it will still not get rid of the fact that people are moving constantly and there will still be people showing up to vote who aren't on the list, and there will be mechanisms to deal with that and processes to deal with that. And that's, that's okay. That's part of what we always do when we run the election. Um, but no, we don't have any details from the province with respect to the date of yet. Maybe that will come.
Yeah, because that really tells you when you can actually get started counting, really, because anything before that just becomes redundant. Um, so if you talk to them, just tell them, that would be like a really useful piece of information for your workload. So you think that one person's enough to handle this? Because I'm looking at this and saying, you, we had an intern before that you're, now you're not getting. Um, you can tell me why and that's all cool, but you basically aren't really gaining that much more manpower, so.
We have, so we normally, we're a very lean team and we normally can juggle. So we do have a person who is, um, called our FOIP and Legislative Project Coordinator. So they handle our FOIP requests and manage our legislative projects. And one of the legislative projects is the election. So they're the project manager for this. And then the rest of the Legislative Services Team is always helping, um, as needed, but always at the expense of all of the other things they have to do, right? Like, we still have to run our council meetings, we still have to do SDAW. None of that really can stop. Um, so I, I appreciate the question because I do actually think that other cities regularly hire a temporary one-year position for every election. I've seen postings in Edmonton recently and Red Deer for a similar type of position that have recently just gone out. And I think they do that regularly, so that might be something we need to consider going forward. But to answer the question, I do think one extra person will be great to have for the full year. I think it's, we're counting on it.
Okay. Well, when it, if you, once you've had a couple of months and if you realize the workload's even more than what you expected, obviously, you know where we are. Um, the other question that just doesn't say in the background, or so you said that the process become a candidate has changed. So since we've all been candidates, I think this is something that we actually would be interested in knowing is what's changed?
It's just the eligibility criteria. They're being, they're gonna match the eligibility criteria that are in the Municipal Government Act for being a councillor. So I think it's, it actually makes sense. Like, you, once you run to be a councillor and say you get elected and then, then actually you don't meet one of the criteria in the municipal government act, then all of a sudden you need a by-election because that person is not eligible. So it act, it makes sense. But so that just means that at the outset, we just have to kind of establish like a vetting process of some kind that makes sure that the candidates know that these are the criteria to even run in the first place, which we don't currently have as a robust of a process.
So what's the difference? Is it a criminal record check we have to do?
Well, that's one of the details that the province is saying you can make that a criteria for being a candidate. Um, if we make that change in our bylaw. So yes, that's potentially one of the things we could be looking at if we, if we come forward with that in our, in our bylaw.
That just affects timing for people to be able to submit their application, because I don't know how long it takes to get a criminal record check. So.
That's all changed a little bit too, as of, whenever the regulations come out.
In terms of when people can start running, so it will come into effect for the, after the next, after the twenty twenty-five election, people can essentially start campaigning tw- in January one, twenty twenty-six, they can start campaigning for the twenty twenty-nine election. Um, we will have to establish a process, like they'll have to sign up with us and register with the city and, and declare their intention to run, and then they can start fundraising and campaigning. Um, but that, that won't impact twenty twenty-five election.
I think that's it, thank you.
Why don't we go to you, Counsel Jolly?
Thank you. Just really briefly, so right now, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars kind of extra that we need to spend today, and then kind of ballpark is another two hundred thousand, um, when we're, when we're into the budget period. So kind of three hundred thousand dollars to, um, take care of these changes.
So yes, preliminarily, that's what we're estimating is going to be the extra costs in addition, because, because, um, I think our budget is usually around three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty to run the election, so that will be the extra costs, yes.
Okay, great. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Counsel McGee.
Uh, just following through on that and some of the earlier comments, I mean, and you identified the fact that other municipalities are identifying additional support. And Red Deer, just, Red Deer Administration just presented to their council, uh, big report saying that it's gonna cost approximately one point five million to, uh, run their election, which is three and a half times.
Extra, right?
Yeah, three and a half times above what they normally run. And that, um, they need, a lot of it will be in, and I understand from talking to Mr. Fletcher, a lot of our, our, kind of our sites have already been locked down, but that you potentially could run into things like security costs, you could run into, you're gonna need, this could take up to three days, depending on your turnout as to how you're going. And then the whole process of identifying how you're going to, uh, identify the vote, and then that's gonna require security and a secure location. Uh, so, I mean, I mean, it just kind of follows through with some of the comments and questions and, um, I would rather have money in the budget already pre-identified than have to keep coming back, that's all, so. And I, I don't know how the best way to deal with.
I, I, I would submit respectfully, if you give us a dedicated full-time planner, we could better define those costs for you and.
So basically, this person would, would probably nail down more detail as to actually what the costs will be and then potentially it'll come back in the budget.
Yes, and some of the, the, the factors you identified, they're external costs. So yes, we may need to rent more places and for longer periods of time, and we will have to pay people to count. Yes, depending on how we do the, the counting, the security of the ballots is gonna be paramount, so we'll have to sort that out. That's, we've already identified all of those as things we have to figure out. Um, so we, and it's interesting that Red Deer had that report. We, I have been working closely with Red Deer. They're doing a lot of really, um, good planning work that they're sharing with other municipalities. So they've done a mock count to try to figure out how long the counting would take. And yes, it's, it's looking like, you know, approximately three to four days post close of the votes to, to get the results. Um, so hopefully, we're not one point five million over like they are. We'll, we'll do our best, of course, not to go over, but we're trying to be prepared as well and balance it out.
How many how many staff do you normally need in a regular municipal election?
Uh.
That includes your volume, you know, when you.
Yes, we talked about this. I think it was around two hundred and sixty-ish last time. But that might be a little bit off.
So combined with what you've identified, the federal election going on right now, and so there's going to be an identification of. I mean, can can you work on a federal election and a municipal election at the same time?
Well, not if they're at the same time. I don't think anybody can be in two places at once, but I think if they're staggered potentially, like, yes, but otherwise, you know, the better employer wins, whatever that means, right?
Yeah. But if it takes a week to count our ballots and that's the same time, even if they delay their election, right? All right, any more questions on the temporary position, though? Anyone wanting to make a motion?
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead.
I move that a hundred thousand dollars from the election reserve be used to fund a temporary election position for the twenty twenty five municipal election.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Accepted motion. Go ahead.
No matter, Mayor, uh, the fall of twenty twenty five will be interesting on a number of fronts. Not only the election here in St. Albert and across the province, but across the nation federally. Um, added to the fact that we have changes in our election act and the procedures, um, there will be additional costs uh associated with it, and this is the first we're hearing. So uh I mean, this is just something that we have to do, so we need the the people to get the job done.
Yeah. Anyone else? Counsel Jolly.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Broadhead's kinder than I am. Um, this is really infuriating. Um, the added red tape and the reduction of reliability and speed of tabulation um is so frustrating at a time when we're seeing so many increased costs and decreased revenues as municipalities. Um, like Counsel Broadhead, I'm going to support this, um, because this is something that we need to do. Um, but it but I really do think it's an incredible waste of taxpayer dollars across the province, so um really disappointing that we're having to do this. That's all. Thanks.
Anything to close, Counsel Broadhead?
Thank you, Counsel Jolly. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Call for the vote. Voting is closed. And that motion passes unanimously. So we're not going to go on to anything further because we have a public hearing starting in three minutes. So you guys have a three-minute window to grab coffee, but no more. Fourteen, uh, is that right? Fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four, is that right? Calling the public hearing to order. Yeah, there is. Um, counsel, you know, the you know, the process, this is a big area structure plan, so we'll follow it to the to the letter. I will allow any of you to declare any conflicts of interest in the bylaw. Seeing none, move forward with a presentation. Um. From our administration, who's doing the presentation? Tracy is, okay. Uh, and then I will allow you guys to ask as many questions as you want. And then we will go to the public. I have some registered speakers and I'll get to that list in a minute and of course uh anyone can speak to the moment that we close the public hearing. Um. Once you've heard from the public, we can go back to administration to ask further questions and then we will officially close the public hearing through motion and move on to second and third reading. And then there's a subsequent motion on rescinding some old motions. All right, so I will turn it over to administration to start the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Heron, members of council and members of the community. My name is Katie Mahoney and I'm the interim manager for the Planning Branch at the City of St. Albert. On behalf of the Planning Branch, I have the great privilege of introducing the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan. This comprehensive project has been over two years in the making and it is the first area structure planned created under the city's two-tier planning process. The St. Albert West Area Structure Plan also plays a critical role in advancing the goals and the policies of Flourish. My colleague and project lead, Tracy Suie, will now take us through the project highlights.
Thank you, Katie. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Tracy Suie and I'm here to present bylaw fourteen twenty twenty-four, the New St. Albert West Area Structure Plan.
Just need to mute your speaker on your, yeah.
We are also joined.
Everyone needs to mute.
Hello?
John is going to be the mute police.
Hello? We're also joined by Scott Cole, um, our consultant from Stan Tech, as well as.
Hold on, Tracy. Tracy's microphone is on. Sean, Tracy's microphone is on.
That's good. It should be.
Not that mic, when her her computer.
Hello, hello?
There we go. Okay.
Um, yeah, we're joined by our consultant from Stan Tech, Scott Cole, as well as city staff from Economic Development, Wreck and Parks, Engineering Utilities, uh, Environment, who are available after this presentation to help answer any questions. So we wish to extend our sincere gratitude to everyone who's contributed to this project. Please be aware that there is a lot to cover in this presentation, so expect about twenty minutes. We want to first remind everyone the lands that St. Albert West ASP is planning. The lands are west of Ray Given Drive and east of Carrot Creek and Big Lake. For this presentation, we'll start with some background information about the planning and development process and then go into some detail about the ASP document, provide summary of what we heard from the community and finally briefly discuss a few other associated amendments that form part of bylaw fourteen. The city's corporate business plan identifies the St. Albert West ASP as council's strategy in achieving economic prosperity, namely through the Lakeview Business District. And so through this ASP, the city will be making significant progress in creating more job opportunities and economic growth by enabling more industries and businesses. To advance development to the west, the city has taken on the initiative of preparing the ASP. And an ASP is just one component in the overall planning and development framework that is required prior to any development. Here we have the planning and development framework, which illustrates different levels of planning documents. The level of detail and planning increases as we go down the hierarchy while still aligning with the level above. And so for this project, we are addressing the ASP, which is in the middle of the framework. What is an area structure plan? An area structure plan is a statutory document adopted by a municipality by bylaw in accordance with the Municipal Government Act that provides a framework for subsequent subdivision and development of a defined area of land. In other words, an ASP is a document that describes the overall vision for a big piece of land and policies about how that land will be developed. Within the framework, we also have neighborhood plans. While ASP are high-level documents, neighborhood plans are technical documents that provide more detail in terms of the land uses and servicing. The approval authority for neighborhood plans are is the city's Director of Planning and Development. Next, we want to talk about how the ASP aligns with the MDP and EMRB Growth Plan. First, we should start with the vision of St. Albert West, which is that it is a key growth area. There will be economic and employment diversification, about five thousand new jobs, multimodal transportation, light and medium industrial uses, about eight thousand residents, many housing options and conservation of Carrot Creek, Big Lake, Sturgeon River and several other key natural features. And with that, the ASP policies were crafted to help realize this vision. How does the St. Albert West ASP align with the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Growth Plan? It aligns with the six regional policies. And also, new ASPs require review by the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board to ensure that they align with the growth plan. And we are pleased to say that the St. Albert West ASP was approved by the EMRB. There were also no appeals submitted during this review process, which is all indeed an exciting milestone for this project. How does the St. Albert West align with the MDP? It aligns with the nine goals of the MDP. The St. Albert West ASP facilitates development in an area identified as priority for outward growth. And St. Albert West is foundational to the implementation of MDP's vision. So that is a brief background about the planning process and alignment. Next, we will talk about the community engagement. Community engagement is a key element for this project. Some of the main events included two phases of engagement where we met with city departments, external agencies, indigenous communities, municipal neighbors and the general public to discuss opportunities and constraints for this plan area as well as get feedback um regarding the land use concept. We also had several meetings with standing committee of the whole to provide project updates as well as meetings with Edmonton, Sturgeon County, Parkland County and EMRB to discuss the draft document. There's also an in-person public information session and project website on Cultivate the Conversation to provide more updates and information. And we also want to highlight the substantial effort and internal collaboration among city departments throughout this project. This included reviewing all the ASP policies and several technical studies as well as workshops with the land use bylaw team to ensure coherence between the ASP and land use bylaw. So a big thank you to everyone who contributed to this important work. On the topic of community engagement, the following section provides an overview of what we heard and how we address that feedback. But to keep, do keep in mind that this section does not entail all that we've heard. For the full report, please refer to the what we heard reports from the June agenda package. The natural environment, it was a big uh topic considering St. Albert West contains three prominent natural areas, Carrot Creek, Big Lake and Sturgeon River. So we've heard about the importance of conserving these natural areas, especially as they are enjoyed as recreational areas. In terms of what we've done, we've completed a desktop study called the Natural Features Assessment and Prioritization Report for the ASP area. The study identifies natural features prioritized for conservation as well as recommend recommended mechanisms for how we can um conserve these areas through maybe municipal reserve, conservation reserve or environmental reserve. We also have a policy set policy section on environment that expands on natural features, wetlands, biodiversity and requirements for further technical studies and appropriate buffering around natural areas. For instance, the ASP will will incorporate an additional twenty-meter wide buffer in addition to the environmental reserve from Carrot Creek and Big Lake. The buffer also serves to accommodate a future multi-use trail along Carrot Creek and the north shore of Big Lake. We also received some comments about wildlife and that there needs to be more consideration of the animals and habitats in the development process. And what we've done was through the same environmental report is identify something called a variable buffer, which is a combination of wildlife setback, a ten-meter setback from upland features, horse and such like that, and a vegetative filter strip for pollution prevention purposes. This variable buffer is high-level and it is to be refined in later planning and development stages. The ASP also includes policies on bird friendly design measures and dark sky measures and how urban forest can be enhanced. Another topic we heard and quite an important one is indigenous culture. St. Albert West is part of Treaty Six Territory and we have the privilege of meeting with some members of the indigenous communities to gain knowledge of the lands that we were planning. When it comes to the environment and development, we need to be aware of the indigenous view and Eurocentric view um in the development development process. The indigenous view is that land is sacred and create um given by the creator and the Eurocentric view is that land and its resources extraction. We also learned that there were several native and medicinal plant species, particularly along the CN Railway. And it was important that these plants were are protected even as lands become developed. We also learned that the lands around Big Lake are of significant cultural importance because indigenous camps were formerly located there. As part of the ASP process, an application was submitted to the government of Alberta to determine if there may be historic resources in the plan area. And while the application was approved with conditions, we still want to acknowledge that it does not diminish the cultural significance of the land and its rich history. And we wanted to continue highlighting this by incorporating a policy section in the ASP about indigenous culture aimed at supporting reconciliation and increasing awareness of indigenous history and culture in the city and plan area. Additionally, we learned about the, as we learned about the history of uh Big Lake area, this area is identified as environmental reserve, which means no development can occur there. As we learned about the municipal plant species, we've included pictures of them in the ASP document. So readers, including developers, can become aware of them. In regards to the lands south of Meadowview Drive, these lands are proposed as employment areas in the ASP. We heard that there was a desire for the lands to be designated as major open spaces and on the other hand, that the lands should remain as employment areas to in or in order to enable development. In response, administration did not make any changes to the land use designation apart from what it is in the MDP. This was a topic that was discussed uh back in twenty twenty-two, where the Community Growth and Infrastructure Standing Committee also determined that the lands remain as uh employment areas as per the MDP. Should we proceed with a change in designation, there are several implications, including an MDP amendment, impact of the city's financial sustainability goals and job creation opportunities, potential unintended consequences to servicing in the surrounding area and financial impacts to acquiring the subject lands. Here is a conceptual drawing of a cross-section of what it might. Here is a conceptual drawing of a cross-section of what it might look like for the lands south of Meadowview Drive along the north shore of Big Lake. There we have the non-developable area, which includes a riparian area, top of bank and floodplain, all of which are considered ER, Environmental Reserve. And above the ER would be the lands that are considered developable, which would include the twenty-meter-wide trail corridor previously discussed, followed by low-impact development and other appropriate measures outlined in the Land Use Bylaw. We also heard the desire for well-connected trails for walking and cycling, and within the ASP, we incorporated policies about active transportation, active transportation. And when it comes to time for development, the network will be informed by the Red Willough Park West Master Plan and Complete Streets Guidelines. The community also expressed desire for commercial and recreational uses like grocery stores, retail, and services. Within the ASP, we have mixed-use employment areas to enable complementary commercial uses, mixed-use areas that will serve the neighborhood, and community amenity site that will enable a range of recreational uses, including a future high school. In terms of stormwater management facilities, there are some comments regarding the location of them. Within the ASP, there is a policy section regarding servicing and staging of infrastructure aimed to achieving efficient use of land and construction of servicing networks in a cost-effective manner. And we also want to emphasize that stormwater ponds identified in the ASP are conceptual. The exact sizes and locations are to be determined at the neighborhood plan stage and subdivision stage. We received some comments regarding the south parcel of land just north of one thirty-seven Avenue. These lands are proposed as employment areas in the ASP. However, there is interest in the lands for mixed-use development, including residential uses. We also received comments about conserving the wetlands located in this parcel also. The purpose for designating southern, the southern parcel as employment areas is in keeping with the MDP and Edmonton and the EMRB Growth Plan. Early in our presentation, we talked about plan hierarchy where ASPs must conform to the MDP and EMRB Growth Plan. Employment lands also enable the generation of economic growth and job opportunities. In regards to the wetlands in the area, the environmental study provides direction on which natural features should be conserved. Leclerc Way was another topic that we've heard, including concerns regarding the environmental impacts that there may be uh, in terms of where the future road alignment might be located. We want to emphasize that the Leclerc Way extension is shown conceptually in the ASP. The exact road alignment is to be determined at the neighborhood plan stage through further analysis. And staff from St. Albert and Edmonton will work collaboratively through the intermunicipal planning framework. This is our last slide on what we heard for the presentation, and again, for the full report, please refer to the what we heard documents in, and other written submissions attached in today's meeting agenda. We highlighted some policy sections earlier, but for this part of the presentation, we are going to discuss how the policies are laid out. Based on community input, the MDP and vision of the St. Albert West, six principles were identified for the ASP, and they, and they will be applied as policies across the entire ASP area. They include economic diversification, water burn design, environmental conservation, community building, efficient travel, and fiscally responsible utility infrastructure. These principles will inform area-wide policies under Section Four of the ASP. While we have area-wide policies, we also have policies specific to each of the land use designations. They are major open spaces and parks, mixed-use areas, neighborhoods, employment areas, and mixed-use employment areas. These land use policies make up Section Five of the ASP. We also thought it'd be helpful to share some conceptual drawings of what some of the policies might result in. Please note that these drawings are illustrative for illustrative purposes only. For the employment areas, the policies for employment lands would enable light and light industrial uses and professional offices, sidewalks on both sides, high architectural standards in the built form, and overall more jobs. For the mixed-use areas, the policies will enable gathering places that promote social interaction, attractive streetscape, architecturally detailed building facades, and complete streets. Here we have two examples of where the Red Will Trail System might look like. Along Big Lake, we have the, we have a multi-use trail that will be located above the floodplain. The lines within the floodplain of Big Lake will be designated as Environmental Reserve, where no development can occur. And the concept to the right illustrates what the trail might look like along Carrot Creek, with the idea of single-sided development, where there are buildings on one side of the road and open space on the other side of the road. This design is to maximize views and public access to the Carrot Creek Regional Corridor. And that wraps up the overview of the ASP policies and principles. As part of Bylaw fourteen, we also have some other associate amendments. They include amendment to the North Ridge Phase Two ASP and repealing of the Sherrill ASP. So on the map to the right, we have the St. Albert West aligned in red with Sherrill and Northland in the shaded area. You can see both of these ASPs are within St. Albert West. The St. Albert West will absorb the Sherrill lands, making it, making Sherrill become a neighbor plan. And the North Ridge, the western portion of North Ridge will be absorbed by the St. Albert West ASP. In conclusion, the St. Albert West ASP is in keeping with the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Growth Plan and Municipal Development Plan. Therefore, administration recommends that Bylaw fourteen twenty-four be approved in order to adopt the new area structure plan. Thank you so much for your attention. On behalf of the team, it has been a pleasure working on the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan, a plan that will foster more job opportunities, economic growth, and financial and environmental sustainability for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, of course, to you, Tracy, and the whole team. Um, I will open it up to questions from our council. So who do, who wants to start?
Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the first ASP for the West under Flourish, right? It's exciting times, to be sure. Having said that, uh, it's, it's a big thing. So got some questions for you. Don't really know where to start, so I'll start it here. Slide thirty. Stormwater management facilities. You said early in your presentation that if we designated the land south of Meadowview Drive, it would negate the opportunity to use them as stormwater management facilities for, I take it, for the employment lands to the north. Think it was slide thirty?
There we go.
Yeah.
Is that the one you were talking about?
Well, like I said, I was trying to catch what was going on and see actually where they are. So di- did I hear you correctly? That the stormwater management facilities that would drain all of the employment lands would be built south of Meadowview Drive? Is, is that the intent?
Do we need an engineer for this one?
Do we have Regan on the line, or?
I see three of them there. I'm just wondering.
No, absolutely. I think, um, Donnie, certainly, perhaps you can offer some initial commentary, and I believe we've got someone from Utilities on as well.
Through the chair to Counselor Broadhead. The employment lands are draining both to Carrot Creek and are some south of Meadowview area where we have any development planned for that is draining to the stormwater system just a little bit north of the Big Lake. Some of them are draining to Big Lake, and most of it's draining to the Carrot Creek. And obviously, stormwater management system, we have to locate it at the lowest possible elevation uh, to drain and make it work, right? So that's how it's been designed. I think there's about ten stormwater systems towards Carrot Creek, only six outfalls falling into Carrot Creek and three, three south of the Meadowview right now, as, as it planned at the ASP level. And I would, I would ask Regan to add.
Regan Pupkin, do you want to add to that, Regan?
Just, uh, the only thing that I would add is, uh, there's an existing stormwater management facility that was built along Ray Given Drive, and east, the east side of Meadowview Drive is intended to drain to that before it drains into, into Big Lake. Um, so, so there's no new direct connections to Big Lake. The, on, on the west side, those connections are into Carrot Creek. So there's no new direct connections into Big Lake that we're proposing from the Lakeview area.
Just the flows will increase.
The flows would, would be expected to increase. Well, more, more frequently, right? Because the pre-development flows are, that's the purpose of the stormwater management facilities is pre-development and post-development are, will match. Uh, but it'll happen more frequently. So, so you'll, you will see those uh, higher flows more frequently, but the peak flows will, will not increase. That makes any sense?
Yep.
Okay.
The reason why I ask is that we've heard before, uh, and I suspect we may hear again, that it would be nice to keep the land south of Meadowview Drive as environmental reserve. Now, if, if I can remember correctly, one of the constraints is the stormwater management uh, facilities, but also the cost of associating of purchasing the land would be a, a, an encumbrance on the city to buy all that land? If we wanted to keep that as municipal reserve or whatever?
Um, through you, Mayor Heron, to Counselor Broadhead, um, we are limited in what we can take as environmental reserve. So the MGA outlines what what criteria has to be met in order for us to take lands as environmental reserve. Um, anything above and beyond environmental reserve, so, uh, above and beyond the ten percent MR, um, the city would have to purchase at market value.
Fair enough. Very. Okay, I'm sure there'll be other questions around that. The road network Leclerc Way. We, we received some public information around uh, the employment lands designated uh, south of Leclerc Way and to the west of Ray Given Drive. My understanding is that's employment, because there's employment across Ray Given Drive on the other side. Is, is that the rationale there?
Uh, yes, there is employment um, east of Ray Given Drive, and also the Edmonton Metropolitan Growth Plan, also identifies those lands as employment, as well as the MDP.
Okay, fair enough. So the, the final alignment of Reg, of Leclerc Way, is that the responsibility of St. Albert to define that, or how does that play out?
Um, it is part of the, if you mean is online, feel free to jump in. Um, yes, at the neighborhood plan stage, there would be more detailed design work, uh, limited design work involved with that alignment. Um, but yes, it would be under responsibility of St. Albert, St. Albert and developers in the area.
So like, would St. Albert make a unilateral decision around the alignment? I, I just heard that the line, the road should be moved further into the provincial lands and out of the privately held lands, so they'd have more land to develop. Any care to comment on that?
Uh, through you, Mayor Heron. Um, at the ASP level, the proposed road alignment is rather conceptual. Uh, further details will be finalized through the neighborhood plan process, and if I can defer to our colleague in transportation who might shed some more light on the matter. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, you said it very well. I just wanted to jump in and say that at this level right now with the ASP, it is really a conceptual line that we have plans, and it is in the best interest of the city to really truly investigate and perform the preliminary engineering and design work associated with these key corridors, our arterial network, and, and that especially when we're collaborating with partners like the city of Edmonton for a shared corridor, like what Leclerc Way will be. Uh, it's in the best interest that we at least do that preliminary work, um, which is planned. And right now, though, this, this alignment is falling past kind of functional study alignment, or similar to, and is kind of conceptual, uh, that will be more defined with the further work, design work, so.
So the final alignment, though, uh, Mr. Schick, would we, we'd make that in consultation with the province, with the city of Edmonton, and the developers? Is that how that would work?
Consultation with all the stakeholders you just noted, as well as the landowners adjacent to. But a lot of it too will boil down to around the further engineering work, the geotechnical, the environmental investigations, and the appropriate, applying the appropriate geometric standards for the road corridor and potential future intersection treatments. So focus largely on being informed by that engineering work, and then through consultation with stakeholders, absolutely, the actual final alignment would be informed through all those actions.
Okay, fair enough. So that, that portion of land for the employment lands there, uh, is, where does servicing come from for their, for that portion of land? Does that come across Ray Given Drive from the east of the west? Or, or does that hook up to Edmonton?
It's anticipated the servicing cross come from Leclerc Way on the east side of Regimen Drive.
Okay, so it would be St. Albert servicing that land, not Edmonton, correct?
Yes.
Fair enough. Thank you. Can we just talk about the, the setbacks along Carrot Creek for a second? I, if I get my memory correct, fifty meters setback from top of bank, is that correct?
The municipal, sorry.
The, the setback from the top of Carrot Creek to development. So the, um, how, how long is that?
The MDP policy says fifty meter setback from the top of Bank of Carrot Creek, um, unless there are other environmental studies that demonstrate a shorter distance, then if it's supported by technical studies, a shorter distance can be accommodated.
So it can be less, but it, or more depending on what's going on. But so what's the thinking around the fifty meters? What, what's the rationale for fifty meters?
Through you, Mayor Heron. I believe the fifty meter reference was a carryover from our previous MDP city plan?
Okay, right. Because I'm just thinking that if it's fifty meters on one side, and fifty meters on the other side, and then Carrot Creek itself, which admittedly isn't that wide, but, uh, now, uh, between development on the east and then future development on the west of Carrot Creek, you've got, you know, a hundred, hundred and twenty meters in between. Uh, do we need a corridor that large or that wide to accommodate whatever we need in there?
Through you, Mayor Heron. Through the area structure plan, we have, um, through our consultants, Stan Tech have done considerable environmental, um, study of the area in establishing um, an appropriate setback or, or a limit of environmental reserve. So we're, we're using the ecological tools available to us through the MGA to maximize that amount of environmental reserve dedication um, on top of the ER limits. Uh, we have identified a twenty-meter-wide municipal reserve area, and from there, there's a development setback that will be established through later planning and development stages. And perhaps I might defer to my colleague. He has anything else to add to that?
I actually don't. You did great. Thanks.
I, I guess my comment would be is if it, for every meter of setback, that's a meter that can't be developed by the developer, right? So there's costs associated with it. So if there's a rationale around fifty meters, but if there's other um, presentations that could say it would be less than that under certain circumstances? Did I hear you correctly?
Through you, Mayor Heron. Yes, the policy does enable such flexibility to, to modify setbacks and to um, get to the exact limits of environmental reserve through the future neighborhood plan process, as well as the subdivision process.
Okay. So, and then that leads me to, that leads to my final question for now. So the area structure plan process, this is the last time it actually comes for council approval, correct? The neighborhood plan, now we've delegated to the planning authority within the city to finalize, right?
Yes, that's correct.
We received some recommendations from outside our city that perhaps that's not the correct way to do things. However, that is what it is. As it stands, we pass this bylaw today for the area structure plan. The neighborhood plans associated with this don't come back here for approval, perhaps for a presentation, but not for approval, correct?
That, that is correct, Counselor. We would provide the results of the neighborhood plan, but they would not be approved at council or approved.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those are my questions.
Good questions, Counselor Killick.
Good questions. Uh, Counsel Killick.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and through you too, Mr. Fletcher and administration have a bunch of questions. So rather than calling out everybody individually, I just a omnibus question here. Um, so on page, and, and I apologize, I didn't reference slide numbers. I referenced page numbers in the actual uh bylaw, so that the detailed page numbers in the, in the presentation. I just wanted to go back in history a little bit, but we had two, I believe unanimous votes by council for um protecting the land south of Meadowview. Is that correct? We had at community growth, uh, infrastructure planning back in like 2021, I think. And then subsequently, we had another unanimous vote that said protect the land south of Meadowview. And then we changed in 2022, I, I believe. I just want to confirm, we had two unanimous votes of council, actually different councils to protect the land south of Meadowview.
Um, I'm personally only aware of one unanimous at the uh community growth and infrastructure standing committee, but I'm not sure if Christina might recall the other unanimous.
New director, please.
Um, so I concur with Tracy on, we did have a couple of conversations about this, but we did get um, one direction. I think it happened in February. Is that correct? Is that the date that you're thinking of?
February of what year?
Twenty-two. Um, and I think at that point we were given direction, we asked the question about uh the municipal reserve component with it. So again, remember the ER can flex based upon the study. So the size of it can get bigger and narrower depending on the environmental features itself. But then on top of that, uh, council provided specific direction on how much municipal reserve to incorporate along the boundary as well. And I do believe Tracy has, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm pretty sure it was 20 meters for the top for in addition to the environmental reserve on, for the municipal reserve and then for Carrot Creek. And then was it, was it 20 as long as the same for Big Lake or was it 50?
Yeah, we've concluded with 20 for both Big Lake and Carrot Creek.
Based upon the conversations we had with SCOW.
So, so that, that gave us some conversation, but I was trying to actually confirm that I, I believed in my research, we actually had two unanimous votes of council that said protect the land south of Meadowview. And then we, we changed it at the uh, the SCOW meeting, but that.
So we have protected them to the extent that we have through the tools of the MGA. Yes.
Okay. Um, on, on page six of, of the actual detailed bylaw, it says um that the land is globally significant important bird area. What, what does that actually mean? And again, that's the land around uh the Big Lake. Says globally significant important bird area.
Yeah, I'll actually ask somebody from environment uh to jump on if you'll just bear with them when they call up. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mo. Okay, thank you. Um, so it, it used to be called an internationally uh significant bird area and now it's globally significant. So what, what's makes Big Lake special is that it is a destination, or sometimes even just a stopover point for um numerous migratory birds. Um, and it, it, it's part of a international uh recognition program, which does not afford it any sort of protection per se, but it does elevate the status of the area to recognize the significance of its um habitat that it provides to migratory birds.
And, and thank you. Uh, and does that, so it, it's globally recognized. Um, and I think you can see where I'm going with this and trying to understand how the best way to protect that land south of Meadowview. Um, so we have it globally recognized important bird area, migratory birds, nesting birds. Um, uh, rare species of, of birds. Environmental changes is we're, we're seeing um, different species of birds that we've never seen before. Pelicans, um, cormorants, et cetera, showing up around Big Lake. And um, that is what makes it globally significant today and probably increasing in significance as we go forward with, with climate change. Would, would you say that that characterization is generally correct?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Um, I, I just also would like to um note on page seven, we talked about enhancing and conserving the natural environment as one of the key tenants around the area structure plan. Uh, do what, does it make sense that using the land again, south of Meadowview, I'm going to focus very much on the land south of Meadowview. You can tell I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna hide my direction here by, by any means. I want to be very upfront, but um, so in, in terms of what we say on page seven of the, of the main bylaw, does, is that consistent with again, protecting and conserving natural environment around Big Lake?
Maybe I'll jump in counselor and say, yes, sir, we wouldn't have presented this to you. And so there will be tension obviously between development and conservation, right? I mean, the, the easiest way to ensure conservation is not to develop at all. Um, right? I mean, being, being sort of deliberately uh expansive about it. And so you know, the, the plan that's been pushed forward uses the tools we have available in terms of the ER and the MR designation to achieve a balance between those two things. Uh, there is significant protections for Big Lake based on those setbacks. Um, and we certainly do not have direction from council to purchase the rest of the land at market value to provide that. And so um, this provides what we believe to be a good balance between those two particular items. So to answer your question, yes, we believe it is.
Okay. So um, on page 22, uh, map 10, it says um, we have 150 to 500 meters from the edge of the lake of the natural feature. Um, am I understanding that correctly that it's? That's what that means? Uh, okay, I've never seen the, the 100 to 500 meters from the edge. I don't know the edge of what?
So that is uh where you're talking about the actual the water of the lake to where the development would occur. Um, that there's a significant riparian area around Big Lake and none of that is developable. So that's why it varies. Again, that 150 to five, you know, I, I don't know 500 specifically, but that it does go in and out based upon the natural features. And again, all of that is preserved and conserved under the environmental reserve dedication. So there will be no development there.
Okay, so that the edge of the lake measured when? Like when it's the driest and the smallest, or is it measured uh in the spring when it's at its highest floodplain or? Uh, cause we, we could, we can get very, very, very different measurements depending on the time of year and.
Yes, so the floodplain and the floodline is based upon Alberta Environment Studies. So that does look at not only, you know, you've got the, the boundary of the lake itself, but that's actually hardly relevant in regards to development. Um, what it really is important is either the one to 100 year flood plain boundary, um, which incorporates um some of the riparian areas um, and other natural features, but not all of them. And that's what the studies that Stan Tech looked at as well was to look at um, other environmental features other than just the floodplain itself. Um, but we've also incorporated a factor of safety to incorporate climate change as well through this process. So it's above and beyond um what we are sometime, like I guess this is the one to 100 is a very standard tool, but we have incorporated other environmental features as per the uh MGA that we could and where we haven't been able to, if you know, sometimes things like tree stands are not considered environmental features. We can't because they're considered developable. Those would then be protected under the municipal reserve dedication.
Okay.
If, if I can, just to add to that, administration did map this from a low water and a high level condition of Big Lake. At a low level, at a low water condition to the developable area is close to 600 meters. At a high water uh condition, you're talking about somewhere in the, in the realm of 180 to 140 meters um, from that high water to the developable area. That's all protected area.
It, it's all protected, Adrian, is that?
Yes.
Okay, sorry I missed that keyword.
Bring up a map if you need to see that.
Yeah. I don't, you do you want to see the map?
Yeah, it, it would be great to.
Uh, so again, this is your um high water condition where you've got uh, a distance to developable of anywhere between 184 and I guess 107 is that closest piece in the, in the middle. And then if I, I'll stop sharing and then I'll bring up the low water here quick. So again, this is uh from a low water condition and you're, you're talking 680, 605, 592 meters from the low water condition to the edge of the floodline. So everything north of the red line is what we consider developable. Um, everything that's south of that red line is environmental reserve, non-developable.
And thank you, Adrian. If, wh- what is the size of the area above the red line to Meadowview? Is it?
The, the total land area?
Yeah.
I, I think it was 70 some acres or something like that. I don't recall what the number is exactly. We'd have to go back and look at the notes, but it's somewhere in that ballpark of developable land.
If, if we could, it'd be interesting to have that just for further discussion later.
I can do it in two minutes. It just, yeah.
Yeah, we, I, I'll, I'll maybe
Come back, yeah.
Come back to that, but um it, again, it's consistent line of questioning here on page 109 of the bylaw, it says map 10, and then it says it's marked as a wildlife setback. And that goes right to Meadowview uh on that, on that map. Map 10 is super important to what we're being asked to approve here today. And wh- what, what does that actually mean? Wildlife setback?
So that is part of the variable buffer. The variable buffer is a combination of the wildlife setback. Um, the vegetative filter strip that we see also on the map, as well as the upland 10 meter setback from forests and trees upland. The variable buffer is a total of all of those setbacks combined. And it's, it is high level at this ASP stage and it's expected to be refined at the neighbor plan stage and further on. But the wildlife setback wouldn't, would look at um setback from, yeah, wildlife habitats, uh, bird habitat. Deer and such like that. So a wide range for that wildlife setback.
So, so it's, it's a wide range of wildlife and we are well, well versed in the moose and all of those good animals that transfer transfers through there. But I, I guess my question is more of what does it protect? Does it, is it, it just a you know, a comment that says this is a chunk of land that is a wildlife setback? It leads me to believe that that land is protected for wildlife migration, breeding, reproduction, etc, etc, etc. And, and, and yet it, it doesn't come with any definition that I could find. And I apologize if I didn't. I did read the document, but I um we have a definition that again, leads me to believe that there is some protections associated with it. And yet it, on the other hand, we say, oh no, we're going to develop that land. And I'm, I'm really confused.
Um, through you, Mayor Heron, um, I will defer to our colleague in environment, Melissa, to per, perhaps provide a bit more context about the wildlife corridor. I believe its purpose is to enable uh wildlife movement. Uh, but just for clarification that um such lands would not be considered as environmental reserve. So they would have to be either um, captured through um municipal reserve, concert, conservation reserve. So we did check with um through legal services and such lands would not be eligible for environmental reserve credit. Just provide.
So not eligible for environmental reserve at all?
Not the wildlife.
It would be for MR though, but we would just have to reposition MR from somewhere else down to there. Or final thing is, I think what you're trying to get at is how do you protect everything? Yeah. I, I think what I'm hearing in general is we have to purchase the land. If you want that to be not developed, the city of St. Albert will have to purchase it.
Yep.
Okay.
And I just, if you don't mind, um, kind of talking about the variable buffer, it provides us a bit of information. We can't always um necessarily take the land through the standard development processes, but it also identifies areas where we may have to mitigate, um, because you can't always conserve. Sometimes you have to mitigate. And so that would be through the subsequent plans as well. We could look at, are there opportunities to ensure that the development mitigates the impact on the wildlife?
A- and if I could, if I could offer just the opportunity for Melissa, perhaps from an environmental perspective, just to make sure that uh
Can you keep
Thank you.
A map up of the land uses while we're having this conversation? Just the general colors on the map. Keep going though.
Like map 10 or?
Whatever map it is that has shows all the land uses, just as we're continuing to go through every question, I think it always comes back to that. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Zoom in on that one.
That's pretty.
Okay. Sorry, did I interrupt somebody answering a question? Go ahead, Melissa. Sorry. This helps us see maps while we're talking. So go ahead.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you through the mayor. Um, so a wildlife buffer is a very generic term. Uh, what we have through the Sturgeon River, uh, Carrot Creek and Big Lake area is a regional wildlife corridor. So that means uh wildlife, anything from small mammals to large ungulates, uh, birds, they tend to prefer areas around water to find food, uh, to rest, to uh migrate, uh, to breed. It, it kind of encompasses all of those things. And it, it's, it's at a high level right now, uh, because there needs to be site-specific studies to determine exactly what wildlife are using the area. What are they using it for? And therefore, how much of a buffer is required? Um, so there is definitely some flexibility uh as far as the width of that buffer goes, but generally speaking, a wildlife buffer will incorporate all of those uses um, for for many different wildlife species.
Okay, but it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that to, uh, thank you, Melissa, for the answer. I, but it doesn't guarantee that that land is going to be protected. Like if we were to identify that that is where the moose um uh, breed and, and raise their young because it's, you know, the willow scrub uh, area, which it is. Um, we call it a wildlife setback, but then on the other hand, we say it's we call it a wildlife setback, but then on the other hand, we say it's developable. And and I'm really torn between we say one thing and do another. I and and that this is the last chance that council gets to actually make that clear determination of one way or the other. And so uh I I will that kind of move on here, but I I believe on page ninety-eight um we have a chart that uh and again, this is of the bylaw, not of presentation. But it it says we're only using thirty-one hectares of municipal reserve in the total ASP. Um and that that is five point one percent when our total could be uh legally through the MGA up to ten percent. So my my question, am I am I reading that correctly?
Uh you're correct. Ten percent is the max that we can take, but at because we are under a two-tier system, the ASP and the NP, we we don't show all the park spaces at the ASP. The neighborhood parks and local parks would be identified at the NP stage and would make up remaining five percent of the MR that we can take.
But but that could make up parks if we approve, but there's not, I I mean, putting a park in the middle of of industrial employment land is not likely, which is one of the largest chunks of land in in the ASP.
But the MR is also dedicated to trail systems, which do go in the
Yeah, it's uh
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not it's not in there either, if we look at that chart.
So so council, I could just jump in holistically, I think we we would, we are absolutely going to use the ten percent MR um across the entirety of that. And so there is a little bit of art between the ASP and the neighborhood plans, but we will be using it. Um if you pull from that remaining four point nine percent or whatever it is, um right to bolster at the AP ASP level, you accept that there will be fewer parks and and green spaces in the connectivity there and as we go.
Or fire holes.
That's correct.
Or anything else municipality needs, right? Not just parks.
Yeah, yeah, but we we could, if we council could, if we wanted to 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 designate the roughly and I'm not sure Adrian if we know what the number is now, but sixteen hectares um of of the land, which is south of Meadowview, which ru- roughly by my very, very, very rough backward calculation, sixteen hectares, we could add that to the thirty-one hectares in our municipal reserve and still only be at seven percent or something like that. I don't know if and again, my math is pretty sketchy on this.
That is something that council could do. They could direct us back uh as administrations to study that and provide a recommendation. The recommendation that is before you today is the one that the um city administration is proposing and has and is recommending. Um is to um dedicate the MR as identified within this area structure plan. And not to not the one that you recommend or talking about.
Discussing, yeah, yeah.
But if that is the will of council, yes, you can send that back to us, yes.
So one one of the other drivers around having uh land along south of Meadowview serviced, um we talked about that servicing from both sides of Meadowview made sense. Um yeah economically, you've got a business on both sides of the the road, you've got businesses on both sides of the pipeline, et cetera, sewer line, water line, et cetera. Um that made sense to me at the time of of original discussion. However, when I see the servicing plans, they show the pipes significantly north of Meadowview. So you're not, we're not actually not actually running the pipe, the sewer line or the water line or the storm line down Meadowview. It's actually into the land and we're servicing it. So we are servicing property south. My my question, am I looking at those s- uh servicing slides? Are they accurate or just representative? And 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 if they are representative, then I'm really struggling again to say, what am I approving?
Specific to the servicing, I'll ask Regan perhaps to jump on with comments and
I'll start off if if Donnie has anything to add, so. So with with the current, with the concept before you here, um we have stormwater management facilities and there is there is a piece of MR dedication to my understanding. There was a piece of MR that is also south of Meadowview Drive. Um but but ne- neither of those require water or sanitary sewer. Uh we also are not expecting any direct uh access off of Meadowview Drive on the lands to the north of Meadowview Drive. So we actually don't have any servicing requirements for sanitary or water on the north side or the south side of Meadowview Drive. There we have therefore eliminated water and sanitary sewer servicing along Meadowview Drive. So the only utility line within Meadowview Drive is intended i- i- is expected to be stormwater servicing. That'll be for the road itself and that and that that will tie into those stormwater management facilities as well. And then that's a significant cost savings or some efficiencies to be gained by that. Uh because we don't have single-sided servicing, we've actually got no sided servicing. So we were able to eliminate those two utility lines within Meadowview Drive itself. So and I'll I'll head it over to Donnie if she has anything she wants to add to that.
Nothing more.
So by moving the servicing lines north of Meadowview Drive, correct? They there is a water line and a sewer line there.
They'll be within the local roads and and the collector roads. And I think there's uh some connector roads as well, but they will not be within Meadowview Drive itself.
Right, so that there'll be there'll be dual-sided servicing, which is most cost-effective. And to get to any industrial development on the south side of Meadowview, pipes would have to go under Meadowview to those buildings.
We are not anticipating industrial development on the south side of Meadowview with this servicing concept. We are only anticipating stormwater managed facilities and MR on the south side of Meadowview Drive, to my understanding.
So how the heck do we, why do we have it designated as being developed if we have no way to service it? I, again, I'm confused.
It it's it's developable. Um and and we are, we are expecting that these lands will be dedicated as either PUL for the purposes of stormwater management facilities, or it would be dedicated as municipal reserve.
So at this stage within the plan, we anticipate that the majority of the land south of Meadowview will be needed for stormwater management. Um we can't identit- so that is why it has an industrial designation on it because it's still land ready and able for development. We don't that all of those lands in purple are not all going to be, you know, you're going to have
Right.
public um utility lines and right-ofways. You're going to have road right-ofways within it. Um and all of that is designated from a land use perspective um as employment, so similar to the cell. However, to the exact location and sizing of each individual stormwater management pond, I cannot say with certainty about exactly how much of it will be purple versus the little squiggly line that will happen at neighborhood plan, but we're anticipating that there will be little industrial activity on the south side with the exception therein of of stormwater management. But there still would be a possibility that if there is a little bit of a leftover, that someone could come in and try to develop it, but they would have to figure out their servicing to bring it.
Yeah. Okay. So what what I'm hearing is very little little to none industrial development on the south side of Meadowview Drive because of stormwater management. We're not anticipating to even provide services to it. Um it it just, to me, it says then why don't we just draw the line there and
Because we have to call it, we have to put a color on the map.
And be very, very clear. It's not developable on the map.
This lies the difference between the neighborhood structure plan and and this is the first time we're doing it. So I'm good with all the questions, but I think you've heard that it will be not the purple is used for development, but it's also used for our utility services, stormwater.
Yeah, I I and I I've heard all that. I've read it all. And I'm just, I'm still saying if that's what we intend to have happen here, why don't we be clear about it on the map and be clear about it when council approves it and say it ain't going to happen there? I I'm uh the the other question I have is, could we do um if if this was a cost issue? I I believe the MGA allows us to do land swap. So we have city-owned land within the developable purple area, um hundred and seventy acres, seventy hectares, I think. If if we wanted to really protect that land um south of Meadowview, even though it, you know, and figure out what small amount is actually going to be developed, could we do a land swap that said we're going to give up rather than buy it? Because I keep hearing this twenty-one million dollars, uh which is a lot of money for what turns out to, again, I hear very small chunk of land that actually could be developed. And we're not anticipating developing it because we're not putting services there. Um could we, could we investigate doing a a land swap, again, giving up some of the city land to whoever owns that chunk of land south of Meadowview? And saying, no, the city is now going to basically trade you very valuable land that we have in the center of the purple area industrial development and
I think
Create it all.
What you're proposing is doable.
It it could. It's not a unilateral and it should be a negotiation. There's no guarantee it would turn into anything and you give up the future earning potential of the land you're swapping.
Yeah, and um and it's to be respectful, Councilor Killig, it's not a conversation for the area structure plan. That would be a subsequent motion and you would have to find the landowner or you'd have figured out how much.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I I
But it's it's a possibility, I think, is the answer to your question. Yeah.
Okay. Um it 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 also says um page one oh eight, map nine, it says area requiring further historic resource assessment approval. I have no idea what that means. But it's but it sounds pretty important, especially when it's in our indigenous relations section.
Hmm, so um as part of the process, an application was submitted to the province for them to review the entire plan area for any historic resources. It was approved, but they've come back with conditions asking if there was further development in the area highlighted as parcels requiring further approval, that we submit another application to the province for further review. So it's just highlighting for future um developers in the area that these lands are highlighted for further research, further investigation.
So we, so the developer that owns the land on the small little piece that could be developed would have to go back to the provincial government before they built anything there and get a historical resource assessment? Is that, is that what that means?
That is correct. Um uh any landowner that is going through a development process has to go through a two-step process. Um uh and really it's dependent and the terminology may have changed. Originally, it was what was called a historical resource overview or an HRO was the first step. And then an HRIA, which I believe Melissa can probably tell me the right verbiage now, but there's a second component to Tracy's point where there are specific areas that need to have further historical review at the time or slash in advance of development.
Okay, thank you. I I just wonder if Adrian's had the opportunity to do the calculation of what? He said it would only take two minutes and I'm sure I've been talking more than two minutes.
Uh yes, so um based on, based on my rough calculations, there was about um it was uh close to about fifty acres of developable land uh outside of the road right-ofway there, north of the flood plain.
So rough roughly fifty acres or seventeen hectares roughly?
Somewhere in that ballpark, yeah, just a rough calculation.
Okay. So again, if we added that to what we already have assigned as the five pers- five point one percent municipal reserve, it would still only get us to somewhere around seven, seven and a half. Leaving, still leaving room for future parks and all of those things that were discussed for future municipal reserve.
Yeah, it would just be the scale of what's remaining for those parks and future reserve.
Yeah. Okay. Um and then uh I think, no, I think I think that's all my questions and I I would, I appreciate that the uh bylaw starts off with a land acknowledgement that says we share responsibility for this beautiful land. So appreciate that being added in there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Killig. Um Councilor McCaw, you're next on my list. I don't see Natalie's hand up. I don't see any more councils. Do you have a lot? Okay, because it's been two hours and I feel like council might need more than three minutes of a break, uh but go ahead and then we'll take a break after you.
You just need to be an old man, that's um just the questions go in relation to consultation and consultation as it relates to public consultation and then just to go over that. And then also in relation to some of the consultation that we have with our neighbors. I mean, there's a requirement under the EMRB. Um but I'm more interested in, you know, I I think you heard very early on, there was some concern from one of our uh neighbors, but when we do consultation, let's start there first, when we do consultation with municipalities around uh what does that involve? Do we just basically send something to their administration or can you outline what that process is?
For you, Mayor Heron, just to to answer your question generally, um when it comes to larger projects such as an area structure plan or MDP, uh we typically go above and beyond the legal requirements when it comes to working with our neighbors and specifically regarding St. Albert West, I'll let Tracy outline what we did with that. Our neighbors were invited to our earlier uh two phases of engagement. Um learning about the project introduction, draft land use concept, getting feedback and such as that. Um later on the process, we've also been able to set up uh meetings with our neighbors to talk about the draft ASP. They got the chance to see it before um circulation occurred. So um yeah, those are some of the opportunities that we
Would that be somebody from their administration, someone on their planning and development?
With their administration long-range team.
And then in relation to the public consultation piece that's required, I mean, certainly, I mean, normally we would only have, I think the MGA requires a hundred meter setback. Would we, but it's open to anybody, basically, right? You just advertise it and then anybody can actually come and provide feedback or a con- yeah whatever information they would want to provide.
Yes, our public um events are advertised in city lights or um at social media. Those that are landowners within, I think, a hundred meters from our pro- plan area boundary, they've been notified directly through mail about the events.
So we wouldn't be required necessarily. I think Starling Trumpeter, they fall outside of that boundary?
Starling sits within the hundred meter. I'm not sure about Trumpeter, but for sure Starling.
So
Yeah.
Uh when it comes to inter-municipal uh collaboration with landowners on the other side, that is the ju- we send it to the city of Edmonton. Um it is up to them to circulate no differently than when we're referred. We make basically what ends up happening is administration response to for the residents of the adjoining municipality.
Yeah, we would, it wouldn't be our responsibility to identify all of the addresses within Starling. It wouldn't and potentially in Parkland County then.
Right.
I would think Parkland County would clearly fall outside of hundred meters.
Yes, and that so and in addition to all the things that we did do, administrations from all the neighboring municipalities were sent all of the supportive documents to review from their technical um from all their technical people, so including roads, um stormwater, environment, that type of thing.
All right, thanks. And then in relation to the park itself, Los Hole, what engagement do we do with the province?
We've also met with the province of Alberta early on in the project and I believe we had, we also had a chat with them, uh, to meet with them later on with our neighbors, our, with our municipal neighbors.
Okay, so I mean, basically there, they didn't provide any feedback or negative feedback or comments in relation to the actual ASP, proposed ASP. I just don't see it in the background material in relation to any specific comments that the, uh, provincial government had or any concerns in relation to the ASP.
Um, they've appreciated the regional trail quarter that we are proposing in the ASP. Um, Leclary would have been another, uh, comment that, comments that they've had about the road alignment. And that's a project that we will work collaboratively with.
So when we move into the neighborhood plan portion, then that's when we would engage more in depth with both City of Edmonton landowners and also the, um, province, correct?
So not necessarily during the neighborhood plan, but we are currently working, uh, with the City of Edmonton quite directly on the Leclair Way project. And that's being run through Dean and Transportation specifically. Um, so there's a lot of discussion between City of Edmonton, the province, um, ourselves. And then there will also be some discussions later on with landowners that may be impacted. Um, I don't know if Dean wants to provide any additional information regarding that.
Yeah, no, sorry to jump in. Nothing really to add at this point.
Maybe I could just add, we are working on codifying, uh, essentially a formal, uh, planning arrangement with the City of Edmonton, right? And so, you know, the, the concern of, of folks about development on one side of a border that might impact them is, is well-recognized. And those are things that we would certainly, uh, collaborate with our neighbors.
It was just in relation to that, I mean, the earlier question my counselor brought in relation to the, uh, alignment of the road as identified it right now. It's extremely conceptual and, but then if we're heavily working on it, what point will we engage with the landowner? What, what, what port, what part will we start to engage with the actual landlord, landowner so that there is some um, more definitive kind of direction as to where that road will actually.
Yeah, I'll defer to the experts, but I think right now the bulk of the discussion is really where that, that, that the node is going to go, right? To, to, and, and so the actual alignment of Leclair Way is still very conceptual. But it's going to tie into the node that Edmonton's looking at producing along their street. Uh, so Dean, did I say anything particularly stupid there?
No, banging on, but maybe just to directly answer your question, Counselor, um, I, um, when we have the engineering work and some validation, some document, documentation done and, you know, identified the constraints and the rationale behind all of the different considerations and a proposed alignment, that ultimately is when we would go in front of stakeholders directly involved and then have those discussions and explain the rationale and the background and look for any input. But there's, um, certain components that are informative to which constraints of a roadway and environmental considerations and other geotechnical considerations may hinder any allowances to, uh, make any changes. And then there are components that once we have feedback, we can better refine around said constraints and whatnot. So that's why we want that preliminary work done ahead of going in front of stakeholders.
Thank you.
I just also would like to remind council that neighborhood plans, though, are proposed by the landowners themselves. Um, that is their responsibility to bring forward. So what Dean's working on is more of an administrative exercise. And so when that is sorted, the landowner will come in and use that information to help build their neighborhood plan. And we will evaluate it against all of the other documents that we have.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think one informs the other, but I mean, I guess it relates to, um, input. At what point does the input, uh, come? I mean, if you're going to move it into potentially onto a landowner's land, I mean, then potentially there's, they'd want to know about that pretty quickly.
No more questions. And I see no more council questions. So why don't we take ten minutes, three nineteen, so three thirty? Um, and then we'll get to the public. I've got a list of about five or six registered speakers. So let's get back in our chairs at three thirty. You're gonna make me do it. Just don't have to start speaking. All right. According to Counselor Hughes, we're going to rock and roll. I have five registered speakers, uh, in order. I have Sean Novak from ISL Engineering. Sean was here, wasn't he? There is, okay. Uh, then I have Jeff Cook from Wind Dancer Properties, Al Henry from President of Bless, and Tony Jewett, Board Member of Bless. And I also have Michaela Davis. Um, I think she must be on Zoom. Okay, so let's start with you, Sean. Come to the mic as soon as you sit down. All right, you have five minutes whenever you're ready. Uh-oh, IT's running up to help you. Ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Heron, uh, Council and Administration. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present today. Uh, also thank you, uh, to Administration and Council for leading the ASP process. My name's Sean Novak. I'm current, I'm the Community Development Manager at ISL Engineering and Land Services. I represent Crans Lands with Avenir, uh, which is in the West ASP and their lands west of Carrot Creek, which is outside the ASP. I'm presenting today to share my clients' concerns with the West ASP related to potential bridge crossing, the landfill buffer and setback distance from top of bank. My clients' lands are illustrated on the, in green there, which is within the West ASP. Uh, those lands are south of Bill New Road, west of Range Road two sixty and east, uh, to care of Carrot Creek. Uh, the Crans also own the lands west of Carrot Creek, which are illustrated in orange of attachment. First concern is the proposed roadway bridge connection crossing Carrot Creek. Map three, the transportation, uh, shown on the slide, uh, identifies a neighborhood road bridge. So basically a local road from Sherole crossing, uh, Carrot Creek. So in terms of location, it's just north of Township Road, uh, five forty A or five four three A and south of, uh, Bill New Verfowler Road. You can see it there in blue.
Do you have a pointer on your computer that you could?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Point, I, I apologize. You're far, far more familiar with, uh,
For sure.
with the land. I would, I think it'd be helpful to all of council.
And that should give me on the screen. Oh, perfect. Thank you, Sean. That work? Does not work.
You can see that there's a blue line crossing over Carrot Creek with a little arrow on it.
It's right there. See that arrow across? It's right there. See that arrow across Carrot Creek right there? Okay, that's the proposed bridge crossing. The crossing is proposed in our client's lands, which was not shown in previous versions of the ASP Public Presentation Boards at the last open, latest open else. We are concerned, given there was no opportunity for discussion and cost feasibility analysis of the proposed bridge. The bridge is being proposed for a neighborhood roadway, which is a low-volume local roadway, which is not leviable infrastructure. The proposed roadway bridge places the onus on the landowner to pay the significant costs for the development of that bridge, and this development is already financially challenging for the Crans lands, given that the West lands west of Carrot Creek that are not in the ASP area were designated as employment lands as part of the MDP amendment versus the residential lands designation we were hoping for. Also, Section 3.3 of the Northwest Annexation Area Bridging Documents that was completed in 2023 by the city states that the proposed Carrot Creek Crossing Bridge may not be needed at the location based on vehicle demand alone, but that the true value of this crossing would be to increase connectivity. The roadway bridge would add redundancy to the network and reduce travel time to key designations. Existing city bridge crossings along Carrot Creek are spaced at about 1,600 to 1,700 meters and are always located on crosstown or arterial roadways that are major roads that are leviable infrastructure. If this bridge wasn't proposed, the spacing between bridges would be roughly 2,100 meters, and that would be the bridge just the distance between the bridges on Bill New Road and Township Road 548. Due to the future impact on our client, we request that connection be removed from the West ASP and defer related conversations to a later stage of planning process that would allow additional time to investigate the viability. It is our opinion that removing the neighborhood roadway bridge is not regionally significant from an Edmonton Municipal Regional Board perspective. It wouldn't cause delays in the ASP approval. The MRB doesn't get to that granularity for a neighborhood roadway. So the request is for the neighborhood bridge to be removed from map three of the transportation figure. Other item here is the buffering distance on this slide here, referring to the non-operating landfills. Map nine, site analysis, the proposed West ASP identifies a 300-meter land buffer around two non-operating landfills named Pit 1, well, P1 and Pit 2, P2. A portion of our client's lands is covered by the 300-meter land buffer and is adjacent to Pit 2.
That's just your 30-second mark, but because we took some time for the pointer stuff, I'll give you a little bit extra.
I'll talk fast. The future land use designations for these adjacent areas are neighborhoods and mixed areas. The proposed West ASP states that several environmental assessments were conducted on Pit 2, leading to subsequent remediation and issuance of a remediation certificate by Alberta Environments. The proposed future land use for Pit 2 is stormwater management facility. In 2022, Alberta Environment issued approval to use the inactive landfill as a stormwater management facility and confirmed that no closure, pit closure, landfill monitoring is required for Pit 2. Given that Pit 2 has been remediated and received approval from the province, we recommend removing the landfill buffer on the Avenue lands from map nine. Our last key item here is the setback distances from Carrot Creek, top of bank. Map 10, natural features of the proposed West ASP identifies a variable buffer that includes vegetated filter strip, upland features, and wildlife. The variable buffer addresses the most conservative area, including the maximum extent of the top of bank line, the 101-year floodplain, and the vegetated filter strip for pollution prevention, along with setbacks for wildlife sensitivity. The total recommended setback is 30 to 100 meters, depending on the area. The West ASP notes that because the components within the variable buffer are based on desktop review, they should be refined at neighborhood plan stage for site-specific data. It's our opinion that the Municipal Government Act refers to environmental reserve dedication as natural areas. Natural areas, in our opinion, are defined as slope stability, creeks, water bodies, et cetera, and do not include wildlife corridors. So we believe if there's a wildlife corridor in addition to the 101-year floodplain, slope stability, et cetera, that that would be something the city would either have to dedicate as MR or purchase if it's greater than the 10%. Also, we included the geotechnical slope stability analysis, site-specific, by Jerapine within the, within the council report here that illustrates what the development setbacks are. So we did a site-specific geotechnical slope stability analysis that confirms that it's 15-meter offset from top of bank, which includes a 5-meter erosion setback and 25 meters to stormwater management facility normal water line. Given that the required technical study has been completed.
Sean, I'm going to wrap up. I've given you long, way more than five minutes now. Because I think we got the, we got the slope setback. And I think Council brought, I was asking questions about it too. So he might have questions for you. But I'm going to open it up to questions of my council to you, I guess. Maybe I'll just clarify what I need to ask our administration. You want, you would like the shadow setback of 300 meters around which pit? Is it two?
Yep.
Pit two, that's what I thought. Just clarify it, and then the local road for sure. And then, of course, what you were just talking about with the wildlife corridors would be outside of. Okay, council, any questions of Mr. Novak? You don't, you don't have to. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and through you, thanks, Sean, for showing up today and presenting. So 15 meters and the city is, is, is set aside 50 meters. Seems like when I was asking them earlier, there is opportunities to reduce that based on. Have you received any feedback from administration on your submitted of the stability of the bank report to them? Have you received any feedback?
No, not formally.
Okay. I'll maybe ask them about that.
Yeah, I think there's more questions of administration resulting from this, but Counsel Kille, you can go ahead.
Thanks, Sean. The similar question then is, we, we have proposed in the land use bylaw 50-meter setback. However, we've also heard that when it comes to the next phase of detailed planning from a landowner slash developer like yourself and Avenue, that could change based on the neighborhood plan, which would not come back to council. This would be a, a working level type activity. So are, are you here today requesting that that 50-meter setback already doesn't apply to you, or are you comfortable in having it go to approved and then go to the neighborhood plan where we're hearing that, that it would be or could be changed to something less than the 50 meters is at the, at the ASP level?
I mean, our, our preference would be to incorporate the top of bank setback into the ASP since there is a technical study that proves it. However, we do understand if there's some ability to change it or amend it at the, at the NP standpoint, that would work for us. I think where we wanted clarification here today is related to the wildlife corridors or buffers in terms of ensuring that our understanding is that those do not form ER, Environmental Reserve dedications.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I see no more questions, Mr. Novak, but stick around because I think what you presented will cause us to ask questions to our administration. But I will go on now. I think it is Mr. Jeff Cook, which I hear is via Zoom. So Jeff, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Good to see you. You have your five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilors. Today, I just wanted to bring some verbal attention to our letter that we submitted for, for this meeting, specifically around the pertaining to our properties, of course, with, with inside the West ASP, which borders the Lower East Hall, 137th Avenue and Ray Given Drive. The three topics with inside that letter are with regards to the land use designation, the servicing, and as well, that we'd like to bring specific attention to, is the alignment for the future Leclerc Way. Now, that, of course, has been spoken about a number of times here today, so I don't want to spend too much time on it. But we've had challenges with all three of these topics and with potential development and going forward on it. So we do want to have consultation as, as quickly as possible with regards to all three of these items. And at the same time, if we could, within the future, when the neighborhood plan is done for the Leclerc Way to be moved over a little bit more and more towards the provincial lands to create a little bit more opportunity for us to bring these lands onto, onto the market.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, your letter was received. It's in our package for council and all of the public to read. So open up to council if you have any questions of Mr. Cook. That's where Jolly, you're good. Seeing no questions, thanks. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Kille.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff, for presenting again today and your, your letter. I think it's consistent with previous input and discussion. So one of the questions I had, have, if you ever, have you had discussions with the City of Edmonton to say that they, it would be possible on point three to even contemplate servicing from the South slash Edmonton land to, to your property?
We haven't had that discussion as of yet. It's one of those items that we're, we're starting with inside this and looking for opportunities for the servicing, because to be very frank, the servicing options that we were given and are looking at, we're going to be too cost prohibitive with inside the City of St. Albert to, to bring the lands on as it sits at the moment and using traditional servicing.
Could you offer us a guess as to kind of magnitude, like twice as much or three times as much or?
Yes, with inside that range. And just to, and again, I'm not the technical side on that, but to, to give you a little bit of a concept of it is that around our entire property, because we'd be the only landowner and/or utilizing those services, we would have to do an entire loop around our entire property to bring those services online.
Okay, so significant cost increase of at least what you would think would be double to
Double or more.
Double or more. Okay, thank you. Good, good enough for me to go to the casino with.
All right, I see no more questions for Mr. Cook, so I'm going to jump to think it's
Thank you.
Al, yeah, Al Henry, President of Bless, who is in the room. Oh, you guys are coming up together? Or do you have separate presentations?
If we have time, we might go back on.
You registered separately, so in theory you have 10 minutes, so go ahead.
I'm Al Henry. I'm the President of Bless.
You know what? Whoever's speaking needs to get right in front of that bar on the podium, just so Counsel Jolly for sure, and anyone else who's watching can hear you.
I'm Al Henry. I'm the President of Bless. What was discussed previous to our speaking actually answered most of our questions and concerns. But Tony's going to do the presentation, and I'll stand right back there in case he falls down.
As Al said, what we've already heard actually duplicates quite a bit of what we were going to say, but so I'm going to literally read it verbatim, the, the presentation.
It just proves that we do listen to you guys when you come.
Exactly. Good afternoon. Since we made our presentation to council in June, we've been able to review the May 24 version of the ASP in, in more detail. We've also had a very useful exchange of emails with Tracy. I'm pleased to say that most of the concerns that we previously raised regarding the ASP have now been addressed. The following is an outline of the changes to the ASP that are particularly notable from our perspective. First, the area south of the lake has been significantly revised to coincide with the order in council that was issued by the province in February. There are now no industrial land uses specified for the west side of Leclerc Way, and Leclerc Way has been moved to run down the eastern edge of the province's parcel. We're going to continue to work with the province and the City of Edmonton to avoid there being the arterial road just cutting across the southeast corner of the province's parcel. North of the lake, we are also pleased to note that the ASP now specifies both a park and two stormwater lakes south of Meadowview Drive. Tracy has recently confirmed that there will also be a 20-meter strip of municipal reserve running along the north boundary of the environmental reserve that specified for the Big Lake Floodplain. In addition, we've noted that the ASP shows that all lots on the north side of Meadowview Drive will front into the neighborhood to the north and will be serviced from within that neighborhood. Meadowview Drive will be a crosstown road with no lots fronting onto it. These are all items that Bless has particularly been asking for. Tracy also confirmed that there will be a minimum 20-meter wide setback along the entire top of bank of Carrot Creek, and that that setback can accommodate a multi-use trail. Our only concern with this is that we're wondering really why the city would be using municipal reserve for that setback. It, it's actually a strip of land that runs along the back of warehouses and industrial parcels and along the top of Carrot Creek, and Carrot Creek is actually proposed to be a storm converted into a storm sewer outfall in the, by the plan. We don't think that's really an ideal location to have a strip of municipal reserve, but that's not a big concern for us, frankly. There are some other positive items in the ASP that we want to mention, and again, Counselor mentioned map 10 of the ASP. It shows the Big Lake Floodline to be significantly closer to Meadowview Drive than previously noted, and I think we heard that this afternoon as well. It also shows the entire area south of Meadowview Drive along the top of bank and along the top of bank of Carrot Creek to be a wildlife setback. We believe that the combination of all these items revisions to the ASP will ensure that the future development will occur in an environmentally appropriate fashion. I should conclude by apologizing for laying all these technical details on you. Essentially, we feel that it is all good news. We will now be pleased to answer your questions. And as I say, that's what we wrote prior to coming into this meeting, and I think it's been reinforced by some of the answers that we heard this morning and also the comments from, particularly from Counsel Kille this afternoon, who we didn't work with on putting this together, I have to assume. Anyway.
All right, I'll open up for questions. Any questions of either Tony or Al? Seeing none, I, I'll just, before we go, saying obviously the collaborative relationship you have with our staff and what you guys are presenting has actually made a difference. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to Tracy and the other staff that they've been, that we've had a good working relationship, not always in agreement, but I think we're, we've got, the, the solution is, is not that bad anymore. We do think there's not going to be, for instance,
Good compromises.
industrial parcels on the south side of Meadowview Drive when it comes down to it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And I personally would like to thank you as well. And I personally would like to thank you as well. That change that's been made means that the west entry coming into, into St. Albert will be an absolute jewel.
It will be.
As opposed to warehouses. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, and finally, I have where the, okay. I have Michaela with Melkor. Everyone knows Michaela. So Michaela, you have five minutes. Proceed when you're ready.
Hi, everyone. Thanks very much for having me. I didn't intend to speak today or, and I don't have a presentation. I was hoping to attend in person. So I'm really only here to answer questions or if anybody wanted to ask me anything. I did want to say that we have worked with the city through this planning process. We have attended the public consultation and worked with Tracy through this process. I'm with Stan Tech collaboratively with, with our consultants as well. And I have been listening intently on the discussion regarding the top of bank setbacks. So interested to see how that goes. I did want to indicate though that with regards to ISL's comment on the bridge crossing, that, that, that's also news to us as well. So perhaps we've missed that in previous consultations, but that, that's the one area where we're not quite sure if a, a bridge is warranted in that location. And, and it hasn't really come up in any sort of consultation that we've had to date. So I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, but generally speaking, I'm, I'm just here to answer questions and wanted to ensure that Melkor was, was here at the table with regards to this plan. So thank you very much.
Right, because Melkor owns a small piece of land, kind of just south.
Yes.
North of the employment lands, right?
Correct. It's still residential. I think it's about 70 acres. Gross, yeah, just a small amount.
All right. Any questions for Michaela? Seeing no questions, Michaela, I appreciate you coming up, and I'm glad to hear that you are echoing what ISL said about that road and, and not being aware ahead of or in a previous consultation. So we'll ask staff about that one, for sure. Okay, we are done with public registered speakers, unless there's anyone else who would like to speak that did not register. Seeing no hands up, I'm going to go back to you, council, to see if any of these presentations sparked any questions, or if you just have any other questions. Go ahead, Councilor Mackay.
And just administration in relation to the presentation by Mr. Novak, in relation to the, the pit. I mean, the province says I identified it and remediate, or said it's remediated, but can we actually do what this suggested and actually build around it? Because I remember the conversation we had with our lands that we got donated from Sherro, and there was the commercial pit there, and we are very limited as to what we can do. So what, what can we do or can we take the suggestion put forward by Mr. Novak?
Through you, Mayor Heron, I'll take a stab at initially answering the question for you. There is flexibility through, built through the, the policy in the draft ASP to enable the city to amend the 30-meter required setback, and that is through satisfactory technical studies prepared by qualified professionals. So that's envisioned to, to take place at the neighborhood plan stage. We're just not there yet, and we need to sign off on those appropriate technical studies.
So by, by approving the ASP today, that does not lock us in, in relation to that. So you, if, if the appropriate technical studies, and this also applies, I guess, to the top of bank discussions, that can be part of the neighborhood plan when, when and if it it comes forward?
That is correct. Yes.
And, and the same goes, and sorry, Adrian.
Yeah, yeah, can I just add to that? Just to be clear, those landfill setbacks are, council has delegated their authority to the subdivision authority to determine those setbacks. So that's already a delegated decision to the Director of Planning and Development.
So in relation to the apparently newly discovered bridge over troubled waters, what?
Can I just go on with the pit conversation? Like, Pit 1 and Pit 2 are very different, right? We got us approval for Pit 2, but not Pit 1, is that correct?
So it's technical, but Pit 2, the remediation certificate that was mentioned was very specific to nickel in a specific location within Pit 2. It did not speak to the whole of Pit 2.
Okay.
But the, all of the testing that we have worked with the applicants on over the last, I don't know, five to 10 years does speak to the generalities of the entire pit. And it does look like the province is supportive of using Pit 2 in its now current state as a stormwater management facility. So it's very close to being
Pit 2 is the one
Pit 2 is closest to the road. It's right along Range Road 260. It's proposed as a stormwater facility. Pit 1 contained the construction waste that is going to remain in Sea True. That's the site that will be designated, or dedicated to the city and will remain in perpetuity, city lands with a landfill cap and some kind of less active uses recreation wise on it.
That's a community amenity site.
That's, as a part of the community amenity site. So that's part of the 25 additional acres or so.
So just, just let me make sure. So there is a possibility for Pit 2 to have a setback reduced to what, 30 meters?
It's basically what, what, what we're looking at is within the PUL that would surround the stormwater management facility. And that would just be to ensure that there is continual groundwater monitoring, more so for the Pit 1 leachate than for Pit itself, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Councilor Mackay, keep going.
No, that's perfect clarification, and I appreciate it. I'm just going to go then, and maybe other councilors are going to do this, but I thought I'd get them all out of. But in relation to the bridge, then, in, in obviously, it just seemed to appear for the developers. What's the thinking behind that? And or can that also be modified at the neighborhood plan?
I'm just going to take a first attempt at this one as well. So there was a study conducted by ISL Engineering looking at infrastructure needs within the annexation area once we took that on. The neighborhood plan, sorry, the municipal development plan never envisioned a crossing because we did not have those properties. So post-annexation, there's been some additional studies. So ISL was our, not that wing of ISL, but not Sean's wing, but did do a, a study about all of the infrastructure needs. And there was a, a bridge crossing identified in that study. So through this process that has been brought up, it has been, it was within some of the last forms of engagement, it was identified. And it's been put up as something that needs to be considered. The intent of it right now within this area structure plan is to have the land available, should it be necessary, based upon the activity and the development that happens on the other side. So it's a, it's a safekeeping for, at this stage. There's questions about how it's going to be paid for, all of that. At this stage, we are still studying, does it need to be a pedestrian only? Does it need to be a vehicle access? And I'll defer this question a little bit to Dean as well, because he's going to be looking at this further. But at this stage, this is just the opportunity for us to set aside a right of way for potentially needing a future bridge crossing dependent on the activity on the other side. Dean, do you have something to add?
You popped in, yeah.
Yeah, no, well said. You're out of a job now, because yeah, this is, this is transportation as you're well. So the only added consideration is, again, it's, it's really largely for protection and consideration of future connectivity and, and needs. The area itself, both east and west of Carrot Creek are, you know, bound and kind of in, in, maybe constrained a little bit by Carrot Creek and the sea and rail crossing in terms of accesses. And so movement between the lands, of course, not knowing what's going on the, with the west side and, and how it would be connected or, or considered. This is largely a good opportunity to protect for that. And as Christina mentioned, you know, the actual definitive needs will be better defined as the further work is, is completed in that area, whether it's a, a neighborhood road, which, to be fair, I know was earlier communicated with low volume and whatnot, but a collector neighborhood road is seeing volumes up to and around 5,000 vehicles a day. So it is impactful to the community. Or it could be a, a simple active transportation mode connection between development sites and, and lands. So we don't know those details at this point, but really our, our focus here is to try and protect for it and ensure that we have that connectivity and consideration for future, so we don't handcuff ourselves.
And real quick, if it was on the, if it was a collector or a connector roadway, or even a crosstown, then it would fall into the levy program?
Correct. That's, that's right. So a connector boulevard or crosstown or arterial roads which fall into our offsite levy, but this isn't considered to be that level of roadway. In, in our annexation bridging documents in our work, we don't require, it's not anticipated to see that kind of level of demand.
So how do we deal with the costs in relation to it? Is that something that's? I mean, right now, I mean, I think that's a, a concern in relation for the developer, if he, if they have to bear the entire cost. When does that get determined and how?
If I may jump in through Madam Chair, I, I think at this point, throwing any kind of like costs out there, not knowing what structure is required or whether it's, you know, formally required, I think, again, the onus is, is through the actual technical reviews and documentation and further more detailed, like neighborhood level traffic impact assessments. And, you know, as, as further development applications come in and are knowns come in from the west development, all of that will inform on the actual needs and ultimate costs. And I like to think at the end, you know, if there's a, you know, similar to regional roadways, if there's a regional benefit or influence from the city's perspective, then we find our stakeholders and cost share partners. If it's a self-serving kind of focus and benefiting a single kind of development, then it falls largely to that stakeholder. But I think in considerations of this, I would be out of line to suggest any known costs at this point and or who those costs would fall on.
Yeah, fair enough. But I, yeah, I mean, I guess the overarching would be, there, now we're talking about a conceptual bridge placeholder, but the actual work around that, as you've identified, will be developed through the neighborhood plan kind of perspective, right? It's sort of, you're saying it's better to keep it in the ASP because we might need it, but if we don't need it, then, then that, that will be determined at a different level of planning.
That's correct. And it, it may be more impactful to even the developer to the west. So that's, that's not here right now as a stakeholder to necessarily share. So
Thank you.
Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a follow-up question around the top of bank reports submitted by ISL. I read it, kind of lost me halfway through, put me to sleep last night, I'll have to admit. Having said that, there's, there's a lot of data there that you would have to interpret. My question to you is that this is a technical report submitted by a developer. You take that into account when, when it comes to neighborhood planning? That sort of thing that's
Yeah, that's an example of one of the very technical documents that we'll be receiving and utilizing through the neighborhood plan process. The you know, we have received it as information. I think that there's been some conversation going back and forth between the current planning group and with that land developer as well, kind of going back and forth on some of the, I think we're waiting on some key information and key inputs, but also an application just to consider it at this.
Okay, fair enough. I'm kind of heartened by what has occurred around a consultative process for developing this ASP. So I'm sure that will happen in the future as well. So thank you very much.
I'm seeing no more questions. Did I hear you say something? Do you want to move a motion? Oh, to close, okay, just making sure we have no more. Go ahead, Councilor Killig. Okay.
Earlier, we were confirmed or heard from Mr. Adrian, I was going to say slot. And he, he had said 50 acres roughly of, of land south of Meadowview. And we've also heard that that would be largely taken up by stormwater management ponds and other uses. And, and my question is, what, what would be the amount of land left that would potentially be developable? We, we say it's a small amount, but I just wonder exactly, well, not, maybe not exactly, but a good estimate of what would actually be developable out of that 50 acres?
I don't I don't have that answer for you. The person that might have the best idea would be recognized the size of the ponds that are needed, but I, I do think that there's going to be some additional studies about stormwater management, and that will all be really defined at that neighborhood plan when we start looking at runoff and the type of development being proposed.
And, and even the, even the design of the ponds themselves based on your slopes and everything else, you could create like smaller deep facility, or you could have a wider facility if you have a naturalized facility that's close to Big Lake, et cetera. So there is like a, there's technical details that would dictate how much land is going to be absorbed by stormwater management. Sorry, it's a little
It's, it's about 7% of the gross developable land that, that is typically dedicated as stormwater management facilities. But there's, there's a range, as, as Adrian was saying. It's not always exactly 7%. Sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less.
Sorry, that's 7% of the whole Lakeview area. It's not 7% of the land south of, so.
That's right. And it would be of, of Lakeview that would, of the contributing developable area, right? So just, so there's a portion of Lakeview that goes to the west, and then there's also a portion of Lakeview that's to the north of the railway tracks. I would be excluding those. Just the, the basin that would be contributing to the stormwater management facilities. So, so we'd have to do a calculation.
Yeah, that, I guess, it leads me to my, my question around the landowners slash developers. Have they been consulted with and kind of been potentially advised that? Because one, at one of our presentations, I think, I think the land was owned by Landrec. I'm not, no, Melkor? No, who owned it?
So the landowners, there's quite a few landowners that own land north of the river and south of the river. So they're the, the same landowners.
Right.
So they will need to dedicate land for stormwater management. So they've looked at being south of the river being the best because of the location. It's one of the lowest areas as well. And it gives them more maximal, maximum developable area on the lands north by putting the stormwater to the south. So we have not heard any concerns about having stormwater being stored south of Meadowview Drive. And most have said that they in, in some previous conversations, that, that that's where they would like them to be located as well. Adrian is just looking in your area structure plan, just as a point of reference, there is in the statistics table, there will be a section on stormwater management. It's probably broken out for the whole area structure plan, but that will give you an idea of the amount of acreage needed for stormwater management facilities.
Yeah, yeah, I looked in detail with that, that chart. So the landowners have been notified. Landowners are in agreement that the land south of Meadowview makes most sense for stormwater management pond, means it won't technically be, be built on. It'll, it'll still be maintained largely as either stormwater management pond or, or green space irrespective of what we show as it on the map. it on the map in purple as industrial land. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yes, but I don't want to put words in their mouths. They have been informed and we have heard no concerns.
Okay, but but they haven't sent any comments back written and um concerns. Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Counsel Hughes.
I just, before we go into debate, et cetera, I just wanted to, cause I forgot, it kept bugging me to just thank Bless for coming to actually say that their concerns have been resolved, because most often people come to tell us when they're not happy, but don't come to tell us when they are happy. And then we'd have a question mark about whether or not the concerns had actually been addressed or not. And I just wanted to thank you guys for actually taking time to sit here through all of this, just to tell us that you're okay with what's being presented. So that was it. And also to staff, like the responsiveness to actually all the concerns is very impressive. So that's it.
Counsel Broadhead.
You ready for the motion, Madam?
Yeah.
Okay, I moved the public hearing for bylaw fourteen slash twenty twenty four be closed.
All right, any comments on that?
Uh, well, I'll save my debate for a second reading, but certainly it's been a, it's been a journey. And I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Uh, certainly, uh, uh, wholesome debate. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Call for the vote. Public hearings closed. Cause that was unanimous, I'm assuming before I see the votes. Um, okay. Can I stick with you? Okay, second reading.
That bylaw fourteen slash twenty twenty four be read a second time.
All right, accept that. Now you can have your comments.
Well, uh, certainly I want to add my thanks to uh not only Bless, but to I S L and to all and Mr. Cook online and and to uh uh Malkor for coming as well. I to me, it's about participation in in a very important land uh uh decision facing our community. It's the first ASP under our new uh flourish M D P. So that's exciting in its own right. Uh, but it's also exciting because this is the 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 sort of preeminent uh move of bringing our uh west uh side of St. Albert onto line and and in particular, uh, not only Sherro and Avenir, but Badger Lands and uh and the Lakeview Business District. This is very important. Uh, but there were some uh considerations that needed to be dealt with, and one of them was uh fully explored by Counselor uh Kilik in terms of the land south of Meadowview. I appreciate that there is some work done around there. We still have some work to do around the alignment of uh uh Leclerc Way. I heard some sort of uh divergent of opinion about where that road should be, whether in provincial lands or whether in Cook lands. I'm sure that there will be some compromise that everybody can um, sort of live with at the end. Uh, top of set uh bank setbacks. Uh, it's all about working together to find the the best way to meet the needs of our environment so that we have trails and uh and amenities for our community, but also a uh, a pathway for uh for our environment to move through our community. And uh so I'm 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 kind of excited about all this. Uh, yeah, I'm sure there's pinch points that uh everybody's going to have to work through, but uh in the end, I think this is a job well done, and uh I want to thank administration for for doing such a good job on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Broadhead. Uh, Counsel Hughes, go ahead.
I'm just going to talk at this one, not the next one. Um, as Counsel Broadhead said, this is getting actually getting implement lands moving forward. So this is a very important ASP as we move forward on this. Um, I really, really, Marta, I really think we just need to look at just having this second reading prior to going to E M R B, however, just because if there had have been changes, we would have we have potentially an extraordinary longer delay that could have occurred and that way we wouldn't want to have that happen if we didn't need to. But at this point, I don't think there's going to be any changes, which is excellent. Um, and I just wanted to thank staff with the level of responsiveness that they've done towards a couple consultations. I know Bless had many reservations. Um, and your efforts to try to find solutions and compromises so that the environmental concerns have been handled, but at the same time, we're still moving the project forward. That's definitely notable. There's been a, this is a very environmentally sensitive area, and yet we're trying to put industrial beside it. And so how do you find a compromise that actually achieves both goals? And I think that to the best of your ability, you did that. So I just want to really acknowledge that the amount of sensitivity you've had to do of trying to manage so many different balls in the air and still come up with a design that will be feasible. I think you achieved that in spades. So um, I think that was the was the major thing. It's just, this is uh, I I think I we don't get super excited about things, uh, about ASPs in general, but I think this one actually is a a very exciting development. Actually, I think we actually do get excited about ASPs. It's kind of odd about us, but that uh, but this uh this development is not someone else's development entirely. This is our development in many ways and uh, th- this was well done. So that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Brumansky.
Thank you. I'd like to offer my um praise to administration as well, the extensive consultation with the community, and it's a community planning the community, which, you know, uh, ended up really, really beautiful in the end. Want to thank Bless for their blessings. And uh, so and I'm sure you'll be here again for something else, but we're always happy for your input and your knowledge and your, you know, and all the information you provide to us to keep our community beautiful. Um, I'll echo Counsel Broadhead and Counsel Hughes on, you know, again, the the thorough process here and um I just can't wait to see it as well and uh the planning that this all took and the time and the effort and and I believe we we've got it right. So thank you, everyone.
Counsel McKay.
Yeah, thank you. I don't, I I think all of the compliments and I I and obviously uh endorse them as well. However, I I really want to point out the complexities of this ASP. I mean, I don't, I don't think people understanding maybe just tuning in or maybe going to read about it, but this entails two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven acres or one thousand and thirty-five hectares. And inside that area, there's such a variety of land uses. And that includes the mixed-use areas, uh, the employment areas. We've already talked, looked at some of the residential development, the light industrial, the commercial. We're waiting for the parks. We're waiting for the school sites. But we've got all these natural areas and the added complexity of St. Albert West includes a provincial park. And that's uh Lowest Hole Centennial Provincial Park, and we know and that was identified in some of the questioning and and questions from Counsel Kilik and brought up again by our friends at Bless about how this is a significant, important bird area and wildlife corridor. And again, I congratulate administration for all the work recognizing all of the complexities and bringing it together and and I um, uh, I I and the basically the ongoing flexibility as we move forward to the neighborhood plan. I think that's going to be really interesting to see how that goes, and I'm glad it's going to Adrian and not to me. Or Christina, sorry, I forgot. I forgot. Congratulations, Christina. Congratulations. I think.
Careful what you wish for, Christina, right? Counsel Kilik.
Thank you. Um, I I personally am still very hesitant and have reservations, to be fair. Um, I think you probably have read into my comments and questions, although I do appreciate that they they were answered fully and and clearly. Um, I I am still concerned with saying we have a, you know, a fifty-meter top-of-bank setback along Carrot Creek, but in the same conversation hearing that neighborhood plans can actually significantly chip into that and reduce it down to uh, twenty meters. And so I I have a this this a a real struggle with saying something that we approve here today based on fifty meters as it goes through the planning process and detail. Um, I I I just can't believe that any developer, builder, landowner would not apply to reduce that down to um the 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 bare minimum that that they could get away with. Why? I I I don't know why they would stick to the fifty meters. Uh, in in fact, this bylaw hasn't even passed yet, and one of the landowners is asking to decrease it uh in advance down to fifteen meters. So in my mind, the fifty meters is uh is it drawn on paper and and the developers have a big eraser available to change that. In fact, like I said, we're already seeing haven't even passed it yet, and we're already being asked to to reduce it. I would much have preferred to have seen something that was um, more concrete and and was a you know, kind of a red line drawn in the sand, a firm red line. You don't cross that. But but clearly, um, that is not the process we have set here. Uh, likewise, um, if we know that very little land is actually going to be developed, and I totally heard all the the comments, and I appreciate them in terms of developers know that's where the stormwater management plans are going to go. Um, it's a wildlife corridor, there, you know, environmental setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I am still very hesitant um, that twenty years from now, ten years, twenty years, probably, uh, when that piece of land is actually comes forward for a neighborhood plan, it's it's, you know, phase four on our our list, and and we've heard how long it takes to develop land. People are going to forget about this meeting today, and they're going to go, wow, that's beautiful land. We should develop on it. I I would have loved to have seen uh, and I'm prepared to bring a motion forward to say we have that either we do a land swap, land purchase, or or something to guarantee that that land south of Meadowview is protected. And I think it is just too important an environmental reserve uh, in these times of climate change. Um, people are saying, I wonder where the birds are. I wonder, you know, how did that moose get here? Uh, where did the beavers, you know, let's relocate the beavers that are chewing down our trees. Uh, well, where are we going to locate them to? Um, i- if that land is not absolutely one hundred percent pro- protected and and potentially owned by the city, and we can turn it into a world-class, it's already recognized as a world-class asset. We could develop it in, you know, lots of discussion around ecotourism and et cetera, et cetera. Um, this is a you know, take paradise and pave over to make a parking lot fear that I have. Um, and I I would be prepared to bring forward motions that say we find some way to absolutely protect that environment. Um, rather than leaving it open to a um, a still showing it designated as indus- uh, open for industrial development.
Okay. We'll wait and see what you come up with. Um, Counsel Jolly, you have anything?
No, I'm not. I don't need to convince anyone of anything.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing I'll say is first time councils had a area structure plan in front of them um, under the new process and and especially such a big one. Uh, so a lot of a lot of, I guess, trust in the next steps in the neighborhood um stages, but I do put my complete trust in all of you guys to do a good job. So that step would be landowner-driven, would not come to council, but we would be somehow memoed on it, I'm assuming. Yeah. Okay, Counsel Broadhead to close.
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously with Counsel Kilik opposed, or sorry, not unanimously, a majority with Counsel Kilik opposed. Third reading.
That bylaw fourteen slash twenty twenty-four be read a third time.
Thank you. Anything to further?
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that, that was second reading. Yeah, passes um, by majority of the Counsel Kilik opposed, and then so that's third reading. So the bylaw is now in full force, but Counsel Broadhead, there's another motion about rescinding. Um, previous motions, you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
That the portions of the resolutions previously passed by council, as indicated in the attachment entitled North-South Badger Lands, motions uh to be rescinded, which have not yet been acted upon and conflict with or are inconsistent with bylaw fourteen slash twenty twenty-four be rescinded.
Okay, anything to add to that?
Well, I think it's a self-explanatory thing, Madam Mayor. We just passed a bylaw and and now we have to just clean up our legislative process to uh align with it.
Yeah. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes unanimously. So anything further on the St. Albert West area structure plan? We're good. Okay. Uh, eight point one was on consent, nine point one we did. So we're uh going on to ten point one, which is a master rates bylaw. I feel like we need to do a switching of staff seats, so give you guys a few minutes to get organized. Are we ready? We're good to go? So Stanley, you're doing the presentation?
Uh, not a PowerPoint presentation, just uh introducing it.
Okay, go ahead.
Hey, so good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I'm here to present the first reading of the Master Rates Bylaw, which is to amend rates within bylaws for twenty twenty-five and to present the fees in council policy, C F S sixteen as information. There are two types of fees described in this agenda report. The first is a user fee set in one of the bylaws and requires council approval. The proposed adjustments will result in approximately ninety-five thousand three hundred dollars in additional revenue that has already been incorporated into the twenty twenty-five budget. The second type of user fee that that are referenced in council policy, C F S sixteen, Minnesota fees and charges as being within the authority of the C A O. These fees have already been approved by the C A O and result in sixty-seven thousand seven hundred in additional revenue that has already been incorporated into the twenty twenty-five budget. So council will have until September thirteenth to propose any changes to rates set in bylaws to be debated on October first. The second and third reading is scheduled for October first. So staff are here to answer any questions. Council may have on fees.
What was the deadline again?
September thirteenth.
September thirteenth, so one week. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Thought for, you said December, not September. Okay, we're good. Okay, Counsel Hughes.
I just have one question. So um, and I go to Schedule C on the master rates of gas permit fees on page one twenty-seven of our agenda report, not your report. The very end, it has additional inspections required for the building, and you increased it from one twenty-eight to one three-two. But on all the other building inspection fees, it's gone up from one twenty-eight to two hundred and fifty, I think. So is this just an oversight?
Uh, through the chair.
Schedule C, just to, we can follow your schedule, see which
Gas permit fees.
Which is one, two.
Page one twenty-seven of our agenda report. So we have um the So we have um the Schedule C, just, I mean, they have a continual, but the very end of it, I guess, there's uh right before Schedule E, the very last thing is additional inspections, if they don't show up, we're charging them a pretty big hike.
It's general number six, the very last, uh, very last item.
There you go, so is that just a typo?
Uh, through the chair to Council Hughes, yes, that's a typo. Um, it is supposed to be two hundred and fifty across the board uh for this type of inspection. Uh, we will have it uh corrected for second and third reading.
Okay, perfect, so you guys will get the motion ready. Um, so I guess the other question to follow up those, because when I looked at, this was the biggest increase, um relatively speaking, that over like a hundred percent. So was there, are we having a problem with people not showing up, or is that why we're increasing it this way?
I don't know if, with respect to Christina, I could let her answer first, but I, I can speak to it as well. I don't know if she wants to jump in there. I'll just go. Uh, yeah, yes, so um we have seen again a continual kind of increase in, I guess, inspections called for that people aren't ready for and things that aren't, um, I guess, a lack of compliance. And so this was recommended by building inspections branch as a way to um garner people's attention, so to speak.
Now, do you think that's actually enough, like, or do they recommend to do it more?
Uh, this is what they recommended.
Okay, so we're just following them to
I, I think we start here and see next year if we're having similar discussion, I guess.
Okay, so just so I understand, so this one, one thing, so if they don't show up to the building or they can't get into the building, that would be a fine. And then it says, or failing to meet your core standard within two inspections, so they've got two chances to get it right, is kind of how it works. And if they require a third inspection, then it's a, then this goes into effect?
Then they get a fee, yes.
Okay, and then it would be every time after that, I'm assuming as well? Okay, just so I understand, I'm not planning to do this myself, but it was, it came up and all of a sudden I had those questions. The rest of it seems like a very moderate increases from what I can see. Um, the only thing I had was the service place and the fountain park increases. I'm just wondering, I realize it's also, it's a modest increase, but those little increases of like a quarter each time or fifty cents each time can really affect. I think the service place went to the families, it went up quite a bit, or the fountain park went to the families, it went up quite a bit. So I'm just, I'm gonna find to it way back where, but I guess did we, what was the rationale besides just, okay, we're keeping up with inflation, is that the thought process? Or was it something else? Because I just know at some point you hit a threshold where the family's like, it's gonna cost us four bucks more to go and you hit a threshold where you just don't want to spend that much money for one outing, do you know what I'm saying? Um, so I just love to hear, what was the onus behind that?
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor, I think we've got Mr. McConnell on from Wreckin' Parks, we'll ask him to take first step in your answer.
Uh, through the chair to Council Hughes, uh, essentially, it, it is that basic. We, we look at nominal fees on an ongoing basis uh across the board. Uh, that is based, again, on our uh policy we follow, that we use regional comparators. Uh, we uh do incorporate a little bit the cost operating, which would be, to your point on the inflation part. Uh, but we try to keep them nominal, nominal, being aware of the economic conditions for sure. Um, but uh that, that is our approach and uh we've been fairly consistent across the board. As uh we had no increases for a period of time over uh the COVID stretch, so um, you know, we'd rather continue on with nominal increases or ongoing basis to keep up with inflation.
Okay, perfect, and then the other question I had is we didn't increase the transit fares at all. Um, I don't really have an opinion about that, I'm just wondering what the thought process was to omit them from the increases.
Yeah, thanks very much, Counselor, uh, I'll ask, he's already popped up, I'll ask Tim to join.
Uh, and through the chair to Council Hughes, yeah, we, we did discuss this. Our philosophy, and it's in the, the policy that outlines how our fees are established, is to use the regional comparators. We are in line with those, we did have a fair increase rather recently. And there's a lot of discussions going on right now that is probably going to shape future discussion on this. Um, such as our U-Pass renewal that's coming in twenty twenty-five. We've also had uh quite an uptick in our ridership as well that is helping on the uh, the other side of the, of the, of the coin.
So if I hear you correct, this, there's potential for changes coming up, so we didn't want to really mess that up. And also, at our current rating, we're actually getting a better ridership, so we also don't want to discourage that from occurring, is that what I'm hearing from you?
That is correct, we, we've seen a fourteen percent increase in ridership year over year through July. So we are seeing a uh pretty good uptick in our ridership. Um, that with the art card that has come out and then our renegotiation with U-Pass, which is one of our largest revenue generators. It's better to look at it a more holistic um assessment uh through twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Council Bremansky.
Thank you, through the mayor to administration, there was a few notes that I had here. The um, why did the outdoor running track drop dramatically in cost?
Thank you, Counselor, I'll ask Mr. McConnell to jump back on.
Uh, you're referring to follower track, um, they, uh, there's a bit of change there where we uh, we reduced to two hundred and forty dollars a day from three thirty-six. Uh, that's because the day rate is now based on a six-hour, where it used to be based on an eight-hour day. And uh they just have incorporated that change to make it more, uh, more suitable to the users of the track.
Okay, thank you for that, and then the other question was, it, the uh fee for electric charging stayed constant as well? Is that um, hasn't there been increases in the region for that?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor, I, I'm glad, I don't even know who to go to on that one, I think it's uh probably maybe utilities. We might have to take that away and come back to you in a couple minutes, if that's
That's all, thank you.
All right, Council Kilik.
Okay. Um, I, this is a general question, I have heard that we, we um our rate for the city to go out and do a sewer inspection um is significantly cheaper than calling a regular plumber. Um, and we split the cost if the, you know, clog is on our, on, on the residence property, they pay for half. If the clog is on our city property, we, we don't charge for that inspection. I, I couldn't see that, where, uh, when I read the rates, I could not find that where that is explained in, in our master rates, and maybe it's somewhere separate, but I apologize, I did not explain that very well. Did, did you get the gist of what? It's, I think it's sewer inspection fee or something like that, we call it, I, I don't know where it is in our
Yeah, I think Tim Saunders has jumped ahead of us here, and he's on it.
Yeah, no, and, and through the Chair to Council Kilik, I think we, we could take that away as a uh, as a, as a request so that we could uh properly identify it. There is, there are situations where there is both uh routes that are on both sides of the property line per se. And then there's different uh, different strategy that we use to minimize the costs, uh, as taking advantage of economies of scale if we're both gonna be doing any cameraing of the uh, of the sewer. But I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, I don't have the full uh, full identification here to tell you right now where it belongs or where it actually resides as far as the uh statements or the rates.
Okay, yeah, as long, as long as we can take it away again between now and second reading that you find, I, I just, when I read it, I couldn't find it, and yet I know it's a hot, hot topic of uh, of discussion uh among residents, thank you.
Oh, through you, uh, Council Kilik, uh, those fees that you're referring to would be part of the utilities, that would be presented in December.
So you, utility fee, not a master rate fee?
Correct, that's right.
Okay, well, perfect, thank you for that answer.
So save it for uh December. Council Jolly.
Thank you, um, so my first question is that it looks like there's a few, what looks like new fees. So like the infill subdivision inspection fee, engineering reinspection fee, um miscellaneous site inspection requests. Um, are those new or they've just been reclassified, what, what's going on with those?
No, thanks, um, I'll ask, uh, to start with, I'll ask Ms. George, Donnie George with Engineering to talk.
Engineering, through the, through the chair to Council Jolly, the engineering reinspection fee is a new one uh that we have introduced or changed, uh, maybe for the details, I can ask John Reed to elaborate on that, he's online.
Hi there, thanks, Donnie, through the chair, yes, uh, uh, Council Julie, uh, we increased the fees quite drastically on that one. We've been having some uh situations on some of our smaller sites where they call out for an inspection. We bring out all utilities as well as other partners, uh, and then they're not ready for those inspections. So we end up having to uh come back and redo inspections, so we've increased the fee quite drastically this time for that reinspection fee.
Okay, thank you, um, and then my next question is about the monthly Grosvenor pass. So that's replacing the current, current seasonal one, so can anyone speak to why, why we're doing that?
Absolutely, and we'll go back to Kelly McConnell, thank you.
Yes, uh, through the chair to Council Jolly, uh, yeah, they, the, at the Grosvenor Pool, uh, we're no longer offering a seasonal pass, we're replacing with a monthly pass for two, two months as it is cheaper than what the seasonal pass used to be, and statistic, we find most people just utilize it more for that two-month period.
Okay, so the cost is actually lowering um for, for residents buying that pass?
Correct, it, it'll be, they'll be buying a monthly pass, it gives them flexibility as well as, as uh it's cheaper utilizing that way than buying the whole pass itself.
Okay, thank you, and then my last question is kind of going to local transit fares. So seniors and adults are paying that three twenty-five um for a ride. Do we know how much revenue we're getting from that? Like, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's worthwhile now that it's, you know, youth and um low-income persons are, are riding free. Um, I'm just curious about kind of the expense of collecting that money versus actually how much money we're getting, how much of a difference does that make?
And that is back to Mr. Saunders, thank you.
Sure, and through, through the Chair of Councils, all the, we um, we actually are, are working with our, our partners right now in distributing the art cards to the last user group. Um, and we're actually are looking at, because the local fees are free for youth as, as the commuters are not though, so it's bringing up another discussion about whether they should be or shouldn't be, so we're actually just collecting the data. And I guess if you had a specific information that you were looking for, we could cut back to you on that.
Okay, I might put together a BIR then, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, seeing none, I think there is a motion related to this. Yeah, first reading, okay, you wanna do that?
Yep, the bylaw nineteen slash twenty twenty-four being a bylaw to amend master rates bylaw and various other bylaws under which fees, rates, and changes are set to be read a first time.
All right, is that that, anything to add?
This is um almost procedural in that we have to go through this to continue to move on the next step towards the budget. If you guys have anything you want to change, this is the time to think about it. So after that, it goes into effect and it's a lot harder to change after the fact, so. Uh, we, I think we have one week or so to make that happen, so if there's something you see that you don't like, this is your time to make it happen, that's it.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed, that passes unanimously, so Council, if you have anything you want to change, um maybe work with Mr. Fletcher and his staff to get the wording right, but propose it as a, a motion to amend the master rates bylaw. And you have till next week, so copy, ledge, and all of council on that, and of course, senior leadership. All right. Uh, no emergent items today. Information request, notice, motion, and announcements, so you don't need Council Jolly to read hers in that she sent in today? She had an IR about photo radar?
Yes, we, sorry, we will need her to read it in today.
Okay, I thought it said not, no need to, Council Jolly, can you read that one in?
I can, it did say, I didn't have to reach it in, I can grab it.
Sorry, was it the BIR, I apologize?
It was the BIR, yeah.
No need, sorry.
Okay, because it's a BIR.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, essentially, Council Jolly has a question about lost revenue for photo radar, okay. Photo or automated ATEs, whatever. Um, anyone else? I have one, but I'll go to council, anyone else have any questions? So my question I emailed ahead of time was Granite Pool, I hope Kelly's still around to help us out through this, but it's going to be thirty degrees all this week, maybe the next couple of weeks, so might have to revisit the, the monthly versus the seasonal charge for Granite Pool or Grosvenor Pool if um we can succeed in keeping it open, but I'll let you start and then pass it off to Kelly if you want.
Uh, in fact, uh, Kelly will, will take the line, share the answer, but uh, you know, the, the uh, the bottom line is, it is related, um, it's seasonal, right, as you know, that's changing, but it's also seasonal in terms of workers availability, right? And, and summer students heading back, and so none of that's insurmountable uh by any stretch of the imagination. Uh, the other factor is the time it takes to actually close out the pool in good weather. Uh, and with those two statements, I'm, I'm totally out of my depth in terms of pool maintenance and closures, so I'll turn it over to, to Kelly McConnell.
You're in the deep end?
Uh, through to the mayor, I'll, I'll just uh cover a few things, um. I would start by saying with, with climate change, uh, these are the kind of realities that uh we're being faced with, for sure. Um, we, not that we rely totally in what the rest of the region does all the time. Uh, but we did a quick scan and, and we're finding, um, typically most regional outdoor facilities uh in Edmonton, for example, uh, are still closing out on the lo- long weekend, but we are see a handful that are extending out through school. Uh, for example, uh, their water play park, they keep operating till September fifteenth. Um, and uh, but I'm sure they're getting the same questions we're getting with the very warm weather we're experiencing in early September. Uh, but uh, as mentioned uh by Mr. Fletcher, that uh, from an operation perspective, uh, a big challenge for us is that uh, many of our lifeguard staff are students and uh availability to schedule staff in September uh is, is typically less, uh, they go back to school. Uh, they may still work with us at a casual basis, but their availability is reduced uh, uh, because they're going back to school. Um, we certainly would see, you know, volume of users would be limited, as more so, not so much on the weekend perhaps, but during the week. Uh, because all the students are at school, but uh, we would have to, if we were to go that route, we'd have to consider adjusted hours for that. Um, as mentioned, uh, may create a smaller window uh to perform maintenance, um, uh, which occurs, uh, we, we do our maintenance. Uh, the window before is often very tight, uh, depending what kind of spring we have. Uh, but we do have a limited window if we have to do something significant, uh, that is the time we have to do it. And then um, depending on what that is, we could run into cold weather, um, because we have to winterize uh, uh, the facility. And uh, you know, things like caulking fine cracks uh to the building exterior, the weather has to be at a certain temperature, all those things come into play. Um, I would hazard a guess that uh, early September would still be, be reasonable, given, given the change we're seeing. Uh, but uh, extending it out to the end of September and whatnot might be a big challenge for us. Um, the um, a- and the other thing is, uh, we may be asked, they say, well, why don't you uh, just uh, you know, uh, adjust your schedule with staffing based on other weather, uh, that, it's difficult to do that arbitrarily. Uh, it, it, uh, it's something that we have to plan in advance, that we'd commit to be in openness, we could schedule as we schedule our staff uh fairly well in advance and uh, but uh, I think, you know, it's something that can be considered. Uh, um, and there might be some restriction, I just wanted to outline some of the challenges that, that we would have with that. Um, it may be mentioned that uh, the, our timeframes that we have established for opening our outdoor aquatic facilities and closing is a service standard, uh, so that would require a, a change approved by council. Uh, and then we would need to figure out and adjust our budget accordingly as well. So that would be pretty much what we would have to look at.
And so I think, Mayor, I mean, it, it's done this year, right, we've effectively, we've had the
The dogs were in there yesterday.
Yeah, and that
Humans in there.
Those two things don't, don't mesh in terms of that, and so we'll look at it for next season certainly, and take a look at what the art of the possible is, um. Well, um, and, and ultimately then it's, it does become a uh, a service level. But um, you know, we would try and inform that with the analysis, right, to, to see what the timeline is, what the staffing realities may be. Maybe it's just open on weekends for a couple, I don't know, uh, but we'd have to take a
I totally appreciate that, but I feel like you need some council direction, so a BIR. Okay, um, and I'll lay out a bunch of options, whether it's evenings, weekends, just maybe the first two weeks of September to ease us into this. Um, and I'll do the same thing um for Woodland Spray Park. I, I mean, is Woodlands Break Park closed now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah.
amenities are closed, is that right, Kelly?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, um, what we've noticed is that, uh, in, in some cases, the outdoor pool in other, uh, communities, the outdoor pools are closed, but they have extended the spray park. And, and I'm not sure all of them, some of them are not staffed, so that might play into it as well.
Okay, I'll, I'll separate it out in my, in my BIR, but again, thirty one degrees this weekend, the spray park would be nice to have, right? It, but I will pass on, I said it in a email earlier this morning, the dog swim was amazing as usual, it's the standard that people expect. Ran into Christian Benson there, he had his dog, it was awesome, dogs, there was hundreds of dogs there and they're wild, but they're having a good time, so. Uh, anyone else have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, just, um, to say, you know, on behalf of, of all of council and all of the residents in St. Albert, uh, families, uh, services, FCSS and Wreckin Parks did an awesome job on their Good Neighbor
Oh, yeah.
events, um. I know Mayor, Mayor and, um, Counsel Mekai attended one, I was able to go to three of them, uh, in Riverside, uh, Dixon Pond and, and Deer Ridge, um, and there were super well organized, super well attended and, uh, uh, lots of fun for the kids, so they, uh, it, it was again, a beautiful day. And, and it was just great to see so many ne- neighbors and new neighbors out, um. The comment I kind of made to, to several people was that, you know, we can build streets and roads and sewers and houses, but it's when, um, FCSS gets out and has these kind of events that we build neighborhoods. And that's what everybody loves about St. Albert, so, uh, great job, Mr. Fletcher, if you could, again, pass on our comments, uh, and thank yous for everybody, I saw lots of staff out as well, I could never remember all their names. Um, and some of them were, uh, some of our, our staff over the summer that are, you know, that was their last thing that they attended, so they're gone back to school, uh, or other things, so, um, timing, uh, was perfect, that it was a last great day of summer and, and a great turnout for all residents. And certainly, as I said, that it really did help to build neighborhoods, um, and, and neighborhood connections, greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you for that, Counsel Kilik, it was, I was up at Flagstone, it was amazing. Um, it was great, so good community stuff. And Counsel Mekai just whispered in my ears that we need to publicly acknowledge too, that a St. Albert resident was appointed to the Senate uh, on the weekend. Uh, Dr. Christopher Wells, who we all know very well, because he also served as the Chair of our Pleasing Committee for many years, so uh, a, awesome, and congratulations to Chris on that achievement, that's, that's a nice one, so.
I'd also just like to mention, uh, Madam Mayor, that it's nice to see King Charles the Third in council chambers with us.
I was gonna say, his picture showed up over the August break.
Today, actually.
Today?
It was this morning.
This is morning, yeah, so, uh, we had had the Queen here since her passing shrouded, and, uh, we were waiting for an official portrait of King Charles, and it has arrived. So that's kind of cool, I'll have to go have a better look at it. All right, oh, I also wanted to just say something about the census, so seventy two thousand three hundred and sixteen people, uh, at the time of count, probably a few more now. Uh, we had a little poll and, uh, honestly, Mr. Fletcher, you were like hundred people off. You're, you. No, we did this, we did this early. And yes, he was seventy two thousand four hundred and eighty was what his guess. I got, the, the closest counselor was you, Counsel Jolly, you guessed seventy two thousand even. And so you were off by three hundred, that's pretty close, so that was fun. I think it was, I think it was good, nine point two percent. Sh- Sheeta was very ambitious with seventy four thousand two hundred. I was, I was saying hi to, I was the next one, I think she and I said seventy three, so. Anyway, that's it for that, so now we need a motion to go on camera, uh, to do um, land matter and then, uh, in, uh, council dialogue with, with Bill, so who wants to do that? Counsel Kilik? Oh, you disappeared.
That council moving camera to discuss the matter pursuant to section twenty four, one A and twenty five, one C of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Voting's closed. Passes unanimously.